Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started. If I may ask for everybody to come and take your seats. Welcome to the July 22 meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. My name is Jay Mankar. I'm ZB A chair. Directly to my right is Josh Neely, vice chair, and to his right, member JP Boucher. Going across the aisle there, across the stage, member Robert Shaw, member Steve Linell, and alternate Joseph Patry. We do have a full complement of five members of the board this evening. So unless a board member recuses himself, all five board members will be participating in voting. Alternates may also fully participate in all the discussions but won't vote unless a member recuses himself, as I mentioned. And also to my left is Carter Falk, deputy planning manager. So just a little bit in terms of the procedures this evening. So tonight we have, oh, actually, I will back up, just in case anybody is here for the first case that was on the agenda, that's the city of Nashua's Division of Public Works application regarding a sign, a proposed sign. That case has been postponed until August 12th. So if you are here for that meeting, we will not be hearing it this evening. It will be on August 12th. So otherwise, we have two cases before us this evening. Both are for variances. So a variance is a request to deviate from the strict requirements of the zoning ordinance. In order for the zoning board to grant a variance, we have to find that five criteria have been met: that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, that granting the variance would do substantial justice, that there would be no diminution of surrounding property values, and that owing to some special condition of the property, denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant who's seeking it. So the order of business will be each, I will read the case into the record. The applicants will be invited to come forward to address the board. From the podium here, everybody who addresses the board will be asked to state his or her name and address. And then applicants will have up to 15 minutes to address the board. The board can, of course, also ask questions of the applicant at that time. Following that, we will invite anybody who wishes to speak in support of the application to come forward and address the board. Each person would have, has up to five minutes to address the board and expressing whatever you wish in support of the application. You don't have to use all five minutes, but you do have five minutes. Following that, we'll ask if there's anybody who has any questions, concerns, or opposition. And each of you will then be invited to come up and once again, address the board, and you'd have up to five minutes. I will say, we do have a lot of people here this evening, so we would request that you try to keep your comments as succinct as possible. We do have some letters, so we will be acknowledging the letters as well. We won't necessarily, I won't necessarily read them all, some of them are lengthy. But if you did provide us with a letter, just know that that has been received and it will be a part of the record. Following, once the last person who is speaking with questions, concerns, or opposition is finished, then the applicants will be invited to come back up to the podium and provide any rebuttal that they may wish to provide. And then following that, and this can get tricky, anybody who spoke in opposition, you basically would have to kind of get together and select one person from among yourselves to come back and give some final words to the board. And again, that would be for up to five minutes. And usually, if there's a few people, we'll give you a chance to kind of convene and figure out who wants to come forward. So once again, a lot of people here, so we just ask that you try to keep your comments succinct and not repeat yourself as much as possible. Also, all questions and comments should be addressed to the board, you know, not back and forth towards the applicants. If you do ask a question of the board, the applicants are here, they'll hear you, and they will be invited to respond as well. So I think with that, unless I miss anything, I'm going to call roll call. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Linell.
Present.
Mr. Patry.
Present.
And of course, I'm present as well. And if I, unless I miss anything, I'm going to read the first case into the record. So the first case is the application of Gateway Homes LLC, owner, at 16 Pennechuck Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-17B to exceed the maximum number of principal structures on one lot permitted, six, one permitted, six single-family detached homes proposed, that's in the RA zone in Ward Two. And I believe the applicant as representative is present.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman, attorney here in Nashua, attorney here in Prohlman. And I'm here on behalf of Gateway Homes Limited Liability Company, Scott Bonifant, the principal of Gateway Homes is with me tonight. Mr. Chairman, I have two handouts for the board that I want to distribute if I may. Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, here's the first. This first one is about traffic that I just obtained today, and I'll speak to it in my presentation. And then the second, the documents which did make its way into the, I emailed it in, I don't know, sometime, but I said I'd bring extra copies, and so here's just the first you gave, the four plans that I proposed. Mr. Chairman, we are here for a variance to allow multiple structures on one lot for 16 Pennechuck. We are in the RA district. The RA district allows up to six units per acre, allows units to be on 7,500 square foot lots, which comes into play when I speak to the criteria. Our particular lot, Mr. Chairman and members, we have a lot that's 1.3, 1.83 acres, that's a very large and unusual lot for this established neighborhood. We have, we're on 16 Pennechuck. We have Brinton Drive right behind the project with some homes, and Nathan Court right next to us. And our project is somewhat of a mirror of Nathan Court. Nathan Court, like, like our project, has six driveways coming off of it. We are proposing to have six driveways, six units coming off of our lot. So it's very similar to what people see out there today. The project, it will be serviced by Pennechuck, city sewer, typical utilities, and we don't expect any issues or problems with that. The project has a bit of a slope, but the engineering team from Meridian will be addressing the layout and all the slope issues and typical planning board issues should this project go forward. I would note, Mr. Chairman and members, when this project first came to me, it reminded me very much of a couple other variances I've done, same type of variance, multiple units on one lot. We had 122 Manchester Street, there were four units on that lot, and that was, I forget the acres, I apologize, but we had similarly, most, more recently, we had four units on two old field road, four condominium units on two old field road, and that was on 1.5 acres. So we have examples of this request that I've personally done, and I know there are many other, many others throughout the, throughout the city. The RA district, as I mentioned, allows units to 7,500 square feet. If we crunch the numbers based upon the acreage and the square footage, you know, this lot could, could yield up to 10 or 11 units. It would certainly be tight, but the zoning ordinance allows much more than what we're requesting. The house plans that I provided to you show a house that is, that Scott put a lot of thought into it with his architect and to meet the character of the neighborhood. We can't build McMansions with these particular units. These are going to be relatively smaller units, single story, with the option of a basement, basement rooms, basement family rooms, or possible basement bedrooms. You should have received a letter from Randy Trammell, from Keller Williams, speaking to the property values impact, and I'll come back to that. And just initially, I did review all the letters that I saw with the packet from the neighbors, and the overall theme of that was density and traffic. I think we can, I think our density is, is very fair for this application, for this neighborhood. And the traffic concerns, you know, while I appreciate people see a wooded lot that's going to turn into homes, and they think, oh, we're going to have Boston traffic. Well, it's not quite that bad because when this project initially started, it was, the team sat down with city staff on a conservation subdivision with seven units. And the conservation subdivision didn't work for a number of reasons, but as part of that process, the engineering team put together the traffic impact report threshold worksheet that I provided. And if you are not familiar with this, what the engineering department does and the planning board does is they take a look at traffic generation and determine whether or not a traffic study is going to be needed based upon certain thresholds that the city has set back in, you know, some years ago. And if you look at the threshold report, we don't come close. We, remember, this is for, I think, seven units were submitted early, earlier this year to the planning and engineering staff, and we are generating seven, seven AM peaks. AM, I'm not traffic engineer, traffic engineers can rattle this stuff off the top of their head. We are generating very little traffic. We're generating seven AM peak period trips in the, in the morning, obviously, and then seven coming home at night. The threshold, you can see from the report, is if we're generating 75 trips in the, in either peak hour, AM or PM peak, then we would have to do a full traffic report, a full traffic study for the planning board, for planning board purposes, and we don't come close. We're a fraction of what is required on the traffic. So I appreciate the neighbors' concerns. I would have the same concerns, but there's really going to be, from six homes, we're really going to have very little traffic generated from this site. And there, these homes are intended to be unrestricted, not a great way to say it, not elderly, not 55 or older, not 62 and older. So I wouldn't be surprised if we have a mix of couples or maybe a few families at this With that, Mr. Chairman, I was going to speak to my, the variance criteria, unless the board had any questions at the moment. We believe the application before you is not contrary to the public interest. Again, you have my application. We are proposing a residential use in a residential district at a density much lower than what's allowed. We have detached homes, we're not providing, we're not proposing townhouses or multifamily buildings. We are aiming to be consistent with the neighborhood, and as a result, we don't see any negative impact on public healthy, health, safety, or welfare. We don't see any public rights being impacted or injured. We believe that we are meeting the spirit of the ordinance and given this unusual large lot in the middle of an established residential district, we believe the six proposed units meets the, meets the spirit of the ordinance. And again, it's very similar to Nathan, Nathan Court. Again, we don't see that we have any impact upon sa, safety or the welfare of the city. We believe substantial justice will be done with this application, given the large lot for this site. The one house has been, since been taken down on the site, really didn't make sense. It's too big, it's too big a lot for one house. We believe that the six is a fair use. We didn't go, we didn't push for seven or eight units. We believe six is a fair amount of units for this site, given the, given the size of this lot and being respectful of the neighborhood. We believe that the balancing test of the substantial justice criteria falls in favor of the applicant. We're adding housing to the city without any impact to the, to the neighborhood. We have a letter from Randy Wilbert, from Keller Williams, speaking to the property value criteria, and just to quote his conclusion with this, with his review and research in mind, "In my opinion, the granting the variance as requested will not diminish the value of surrounding properties." You have the letter, he goes on further detail, but Mr. Trammell has been a realtor here in Nashua for a long, long time. He's a, he's a builder as well, so he's very familiar with the, with this property, this site in the city. And finally, Mr. Chairman, we, speaking to the hardship criteria, again, we see this lot is an oversized lot, unusual flag-shaped lot. This lot was, as far as I could tell from my title research, this lot was, it was created going back to 1896, when this section of Nashua was originally laid out. And, and the plan from 1896 actually takes these Pennechucks and goes all the way down to the Merrimack River, pre-Biza, right? So it's kind of interesting. But this lot is an unusual kind of leftover lot for this neighborhood, and as a result, we have some unique characteristics. And with the kind of a flag lot, with a back lot, with a 75 feet of frontage, we believe that the most practical use is to do the, what we have proposed to you, condominium layout. The property, again, is being proposed as residential use in a residential district. We believe we have a reasonable use, and we see no reason, no fair and substantial reason to prohibit the proposed use. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my initial talk, and I will certainly respond to questions or concerns from, from neighbors. And if I may, okay. So that's what I have for now. Does the board have any questions for me at the time?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
Counselor, thank you for the very complete packet. We appreciate that. Thank you for addressing the traffic. I know these folks, from, from reading the letters, that was certainly one of the big, the big issues there. Just a couple of questions. How did you guys, it sounded like you started with seven, you backed it off to six. Can you kind of talk the reason why fewer? You're trying to go with fewer, and it looks like actually smaller. I mean, you go with ranch size, probably two or three bedrooms, so, so not the McMansions, as you said.
Right.
So why that design?
Well, the, initially, the applicant and the engineering team, they were looking at a conservation subdivision, and, and the trade-off of that is you can give more density and you can, you can do more units, but at the same time, it didn't work because you needed to be abutting some conservation land. You need to have all kinds of various setbacks and conservation principles on your property. So it didn't work. So as a result, they came to me and I said, hmm, honestly, I said, seven seems to feel a bit too much, all right? Five is, five is probably undersized for this. I thought six was an appropriate number of units for this particular site, given the density that's allowed and given just how the whole neighborhood lays out. We thought six was an appropriate number.
And reading through the letters, it seems to me the underlying theme from, from the folks in that neighborhood is they're concerned that they don't want to be staring at people's, you know, their back windows, that type of stuff. What's the plan for the whole site to kind of, is there some fencing going up? Is there?
Absolutely.
Trees? What, maybe you can talk through what your plan is there?
Absolutely. So you can see there's a little note on the plan, the wooded area to remain within the setbacks of the property. In addition, while we're not showing it, we have certainly talked about fencing, and we are open to putting up solid fence around the property. So again, kind of a planning board issue, but, you know, we are, we are welcome to provide as much screening and buffering as we can for the neighbors. You know, because I get it, you know, it's a big wooded lot today, so people want to see, maintain that, so we're going to do the best we can to maintain at least the buffer around our site.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
First is more of a, maybe a comment, but I'd still welcome any feedback you have about it. So I appreciate your point about that you could maybe do 10 or 11 units just based on a density calculation, but in all fairness, especially with it being a flag lot, it'd be one thing if that, if the strip, if it was a strip of land on frontage, and, but you have to essentially account for driveways, a roadway, whatever. So it seems that that seven is probably, in all practical terms, about the maximum you could get out of a property like this and still have the infrastructure you need just for accessing the homes. Is that probably a fair statement?
I would agree with that, unless you could do like a multifamily townhouse type layout, then you could squeeze in more units, but that wouldn't work here. That doesn't, that's not fair to the neighbors, something like that just doesn't fit. There's nothing like that around here. So I agree with you, you know, with the driveways, with the fire truck radius that we have to account for, with all those good, good planning things, you're probably looking at seven, maybe eight, but, you know, seven's probably the max you could do.
My other question, though, is, and this is, this is one of the things I tend to be very bothered by these kind of proposals in general, and that is that we're taking a single plot of land, we're putting multiple homes on it, and then we are still adhering to the tip, the regular setbacks. So what I'm specifically getting at is the side yard setbacks, which end up being the backyards of especially unit three, somewhat unit one, and somewhat unit six, but especially unit three, you know, looking at it, it's probably 12, 13 feet off the, off the property line. So my problem with that, with those structures that are basically not a lot closer to the 25-foot rear yard setback typical, is that you're essentially being, you're asking us to look at this as if these are, in some ways, all essentially single-family, single-lot homes, but the cri, the strict criteria is just based on the single lot. So all of a sudden, you've got homes that are pushing up against the side, but they're, they're the backs of the homes, they're not just the side of the home. So is there, was that, how much was that thought about? And I guess, like I said, that's, it's a, that is a big concern of mine.
Sure. And I appreciate that, and we had that discussion. So two things. First of all, these are condominium units, and the condominium declaration in this, for this project, like most condominium declarations, are not going to allow expansions of the units. You're not going to be able to put an addition on, on the back, so you're not going to encroach further onto the, onto the rear yards of this, that rear or side setbacks. Plus, if you look closely, each unit has roughly, I forget the dimensions exactly, but a, like a 16 by 20 limited common area just off the side of their unit. If you look, each unit has a dash line, a rectangular box off the unit, and that's, that's intended to be limited common area, dedicated yard area, patio, just for each of the unit. So we, we realized that some of these units have butted up against the side setbacks, so as a result, we created a dedicated space just for each unit on the sides of their units. Not perfect, but we did accommodate, you know, everyone having some space outside.
But I guess was, how much did you look at trying to keep the units closer to a 25-foot setback regardless of what, what part of the lot they're up against? That's, that's still the crux of my issue.
Okay, well, they're all, I mean, all the, all the units are out of the, no units are in any setbacks with this?
No, no, no. My, if you look, let's just focus in on unit three.
Sure.
Because I think that's the most egregious, if you will. And that, you know, yes, it's within the 10-foot side yard setback, it's probably 12 or 13 feet is, you know, just trying to read the, you know, so it's, it's about that. My, my point is, the reality of that structure is, that's like the back of a regular house, and it's facing the back of lot 49116.
Yep.
So if somebody was just coming in, you know, if that just happened to be a single lot there like that, there would have to be some, in my mind, some good justification why that would have to be there, you know? And so this is what I'm still, I guess, not feeling kind of satisfied by. I understand you can do this based on the regular setbacks.
Yep.
But I'm talking about essentially spirit and intent of placing structures that are still very much like single-family homes, and most, anybody that does drive down here wouldn't necessarily be able to readily know that this condo or not. So it's just, it's the look and the feel and the sense, so that's what I'm still getting at.
Well, I'll tell you, that's part of, when this first came to me, the, the Meridian guys and Scott had seven units on this plan. It was, it was tighter than you see here, obviously, right? So by pulling one unit off, we do create the additional space. So that was, that was kicked around on our end, we gave it some thought, and that's why you came up with this plan. I grant you, unit three is close to the side yard setback, but that is, that's the best we could do with this layout. We could inch it forward a little bit for the driveway, but again, you need a certain length for the driveway for the car, so we could probably shift unit three a little bit, maybe north or south, and twist it maybe a little bit, but we definitely put some thought and concern into reducing the number of units down to six to create more space. Okay. Not perfect, but that's what we got.
Just following up on Mr. Shaw's comments, and I agree with your comments, Mr. Shaw, and perhaps we can talk about it more in deliberations, but just to editorialize a little, when you look at the footprint of the houses, they're also seemingly larger than what you see. Most of the surrounding ones are, so the house style and the positioning are a choice, but we can come back to that point. My question might be more appropriate for the engineer. It regards, it's regarding the road design, but there, you know, really two questions, but related. Could you walk me through, without going through too much detail, generally, how does the proposed road differ from a road that meets the city, meets city standards? And why did you choose a private road versus a class five road?
Because if we were to do a class five road, I think you end up with three units because they're wider, the bigger, the sidewalks, and with this condominium, I believe that we can go down to a smaller road width. But I'll put an asterisk on that because I'm not an engineer, I don't know the city's road standards as well as I should. But with this design, we, we can yield the six units as opposed to a much lower unit count that didn't make sense to the applicant, didn't make sense for the size lot.
Is it, do you have an engineer with you who could maybe just answer some of my questions?
Unfortunately not.
Okay.
They could not make it.
Thank you.
Could you speak to that, Rose?
Let me then follow up with a little bit more of a general question, and maybe someone can answer that from the applicant team. One of the things I'm noticing, I, I'm, do, does somebody know what the pavement width is for the roadway?
For a condominium?
No, in this, what's proposed?
Oh, what's proposed? I don't, off the top of my head, I could, I could, I could come back to you with an answer.
And the turning, the cul-de-sac that's proposed, is there a specific turning radius that was proposed for a particular reason? Just, I, I'm just eyeballing, it looks like a large circle, and it does relate to the point that Mr. Shaw made as well, is, is what you're showing necessary to provide, to provide safe access to all these units and in particular, fire protection, emergency services protection? Is that why the cul-de-sac is shown the way it is?
Yes.
And is it sufficient to meet those requirements?
That's the, that's as small as we could go and get a fire truck around that circle.
Thank you.
All right? So if, if you went bigger, all right, you'd be pushing the units closer to the edge. If you went smaller, it wouldn't get past the fire marshal.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? If not, anything else you'd like to add? Anything from your team?
Okay, that's, that's it for now.
Okay.
We will answer questions over here from our neighbors.
All right. So now I'd like to open it up to anybody who wishes to speak in support of the application. Going once, going twice, seeing no takers. Open it up to anybody who has any questions, concerns, or would like to speak into opposition to the application. If you do wish to speak, then we just ask that you come forward to the mic, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address the board. If you do wish to speak, then we just ask that you come forward to the mic, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address the board. Seeing none, I am going to, I'm sorry, would you like to come forward? Feel free to pull the mic down.
Thank you. Is that good? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I did not prepare a bit more of a succinct response.
That's okay.
So I'm just going to share what I had already shared.
Would you mind just stating your name and address for the record?
My name is Samantha Zax, I live at eight Penachuck Street, and I am one of the abutters. Members of the board, I am writing to address my concern for the proposed development at sixteen Penachuck. Before I get into any particulars, I'd like to provide a little backstory. I purchased eight Penachuck almost three years ago, I've been living in Nashua for almost ten years, and even though I still miss my home state, Nashua has slowly grown on me to the point where I decided I wanted to spread my roots and call this city my permanent home. I found this house after not much time looking, to be honest, it sat vacant for a year and a half due to settling within the family of the previous owner's estate. Then it sat on the market for four plus months with lots of interest in the beginning from what I was told, but no bites. The thumbnail haunted me and all my browser activity. I disliked the front door, never clicked on it. Then I finally did one day and instantly fell in love, the rest, as they say, is history. I share all of this to expand on another point, it isn't just the house. I realized I never knew this neighborhood existed. In fact, not many people do know this neighborhood exists. I didn't know much beyond Greeley Park or the beautiful ornate mansions on Concord Street. Living in this neighborhood feels like such a treasure, like a hidden secret. I can drive to Main Street in five minutes, like I just did this evening, and I am somehow nestled in with all these trees, walking trails, birds, wildlife, and an ice cream stand. I enjoy quiet mornings and evenings on my patio overlooking my neighbors' properties at two oh one Concord and sixteen Penachuck. I see the trees sway and I listen to the wind dance between the leaves. I watch the many birds and other birds of prey hanging out on those trees too. I've seen and heard a bald eagle as well. I also have lots of wildlife in and around my property, some I probably shouldn't enjoy having around much, but I still appreciate having them there. I walk my dog around the neighborhood as well, and we have a usual path. We see familiar faces and exchange hellos, or sometimes we pause to chat. Our little neighborhood is on a different pace, a different speed. I can certainly understand why more people want to have their, their piece of it too. I've chatted with many neighbors over the past year since I knew about sixteen Penachuck being purchased. They have all agreed this place is just special. My biggest concerns about this development would be the increase in traffic on technically a dead end street, which many people on Rancourt, Karen, Celeste, Santaire uses as their main entrance. By the way, there are no sidewalks in our neighborhood. There is on Brinton, I believe, but definitely not on Penachuck. For such a tiny neighborhood, we do see quite a lot of activity as it is. Six additional houses would mean at least six more cars, perhaps even twelve plus at the most. Where increased traffic flows, noise also follows, aside from the cars, if those trees on sixteen Penachuck are cleared, that would take away the buffer of noise, the trees absorb so much. With six additional houses behind me and clear trees, the quiet special attributes of this neighborhood would be significantly altered. When I take a look at the properties that abut sixteen Penachuck on Brinton, I notice an extreme slope on several of those lots. How will the removal of trees affect those houses and extreme weather, which will result in water runoffs in those backyards? I understand there is at least one sinkhole on one of those properties. Have significant tests been conducted to determine that this development would not be detrimental to my neighbors' homes and land? I have concerns for the small families nearby. With some cars speeding down Penachuck, I feel anxious for their little ones just trying to enjoy themselves outside. Clearing of the trees and land would ultimately displace many of the wildlife that we enjoy. I understand this is not a protected land, but I feel our love for nature and wildlife is one of the things that New Hampshire is most proud of. With the constant flow of development happening in our city, this would truly be a shame to continue pushing our wildlife around. I understand there is nothing we can really do to keep this development from moving forward. All I really ask is consideration for the existing neighbors and properties that have been here, all the things that make this place so special. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Sir?
My name's Paul Piterzani, I live at seven, seven Brinton Drive, lived there for thirty plus years now. And honestly, I just have some questions, I, I don't understand certain aspects. What a buffer actually is, and as far as what size we're talking about on the buffers, I don't have a map of what's actually prepared, other than this little one that I can't really make out mentions for. So some clarification on that would be great. And they're talking about doing condominium units, and I, so I have an idea in my head what a condominium unit, but they talk about that, that it cannot be expanded on afterwards, the footprint remains the footprint, and another story could not be added to that, is that accurate?
It's, that's, if, if I may just respond to yours.
Sure.
Potentially that's true, a condominium can put restrictions on expansion in their documents. We have no documents in front of us.
Okay.
So I couldn't say whether that's true or not.
So that's a theoretical thing at this point?
Correct.
Okay. And then my big, my big concern, as she mentioned, is we're significantly lower than that parcel, and if the trees all get torn down, I'm worried about what's going to happen with runoff, with erosion, and also the privacy, because if, if they're right up against our property and looking down, I, you know, I know there was talk about privacy fence in there, which would be, which would help mitigate that, but those, that's my, my big concern is, you know, the conservation of the property up there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
My name's Beth Raymond, and I live at fourteen Penachuck Street, which is next door. The biggest concern I have is really personal. I have a garage that is one foot on one side from the property and three feet on the other side to the property. So I, I mean, in general, I want to be sure I've got access to my garage. On one side has a window, so if there's some kind of fencing that goes up or some kind of spent, you know, area that is landscaped that I'm going to have access to, and also that it's not going to blank, excuse me, block my garage. So I'm not sure how much there is, there is for my, my, excuse me, my driveway has a very small shoot of it, it's part of, you know, distance to the new property. And I want to make sure that the fencing is going to be good. If, I want sufficient fencing, but it needs to be fencing that I can get through to my property and that whatever landscaping is there, isn't, I mean, I have gardens there and stuff, but, you know, whatever landscaping is there, that it's not blocked. It's a very, it was, it's a very old property, which was owned by the Santaires when I, before, they were one owner before, so it goes a long ways back. They put the garage up, I think, in nineteen twenty, so I know they, my property is, I'm not saying it's overlapping, but according to the planning board, it's a very short, small distance on three sides. So, and the rest of it that abuts, I would just, it's not a concern in terms of being next to a structure, but I want to make sure that I have the, either the fencing and also the, the pine trees that are all along the side of it, still are, still are there, if that's all, at all possible.
Questions from the board, Mr. Shaw?
Because I don't know if you've been able to see the, essentially this?
Oh, not in color, no, I got this one.
But, but you can see that the first unit, it's labeled as unit one, but there's one that's directly behind your property. That, my, my read of the map, which is not exact, but it looks like the back of that structure is maybe about fifteen feet off of the property line. Just wondering, is that a concern for you, or do you feel like that's not an issue? And if you note, like my comment earlier, I, I kind of have this concern about treating those more like the twenty-five foot rear yard setbacks. But I'm just, if you're wondering what your thoughts are about that and how you feel that it might affect your property?
Right now, and that part of the property has very tall, so very tall pine trees. Well, I mean, they're taller than my roof, so I don't have visibility back there, but I agree with your point that it's going to be very close to my property. And if there's noise, I kept thinking, whatever happens, you know, what if a dog gets loose and he's going to be running in my property? To be that close, and depending on what the fencing is, especially around the garage, I just want to be enough distance for noise and, you know, that kind of access, noise and visibility.
Are, are those pine trees you're referring to, are those on your property or are they on the adjacent property?
I can't exactly tell if they're on the adjacent property, if they are, it's a matter of less than a foot.
Okay, because at, at least on the plan, I don't see any, any, there's no indication that the tree buffer will be left in that part of, of the proposal, so.
And I also, to my disadvantage, when I try to understand where the property is, my property is in, there is no, is it called setback? You know, it's, it's going to be one foot, like the back of my garage, that's as far, when I went to the planning department, I could understand, three feet on the?
On the side.
This one side, and where my garage is, it's only one foot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, it kind of looks like that here on this, on this plot, yeah.
Sorry?
It kind of looks like that here on this plot, that like maybe three feet on the side and one foot in the back kind of appears to be similar to this, as accurate as something like this can be, but.
And be honest, it's the visibility, if, if those trees are there, then I'm not going to see the person next to me, I might hear them, but again, we, we don't know, I don't know what kind of fencing is going to go up, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the applicant noted they're open to a solid fence to go up, but it's not something that's definitely part of their plans as proposed. But I think that's something that might, might get spoken about further in the, in the follow-up testimony, or it also might be ultimately a planning board if this goes forward.
If, if it, the fence goes up, that's great, but I, I would only have three feet to get around and one foot in the back to be able to do any repair or, you know, maintenance on that side. And there is a window, and if the window faces the fence, that's, you know, that's not much, that wouldn't be right. So it just, I, I couldn't get back there if I have anything I've got to maintain, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma Dargan, I live at fifteen Penachuck Street, and I just wanted to start by saying that I agree with what Mr. Shaw was saying about the setbacks. I'm not sure that that sounds like the best idea, but my other concern that actually just came up tonight was that when they were talking about the fire safety, I thought it was just a bit concerning that they said that was the smallest they could go, where it would be safe for the fire trucks and everything to get in. I just wanted to know, like, why, when we're concerning safety, we're choosing to go with the smallest we can go, rather than trying to maximize that, make sure that, no matter what the situation is for the emergency, that there's going to be enough space, rather than trying to just like squeeze everything in, but.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name's Michelle, and I live at, Michelle Perrin, and I live at twenty Penachuck, so I'm right next to the property. I know that my husband had submitted a letter as well, and just to kind of piggyback off of that, I am originally from Massachusetts and was, sorry to everybody in here, but very against moving to Nashua, New Hampshire originally. And ever since moving here, I have really fallen in love with the city. We had talked about moving out of the city, and we decided that ultimately we wanted to stay, so then we really laid our roots in twenty Penachuck Street. And from thinking about downsizing, we then went and bought this beautiful farmhouse. One of the things that really drew us to it was the character, not only the character of our house, but the character of the property and the street, the surrounding houses as well. I do think that this would diminish that a little bit. And again, I know unfortunately not everybody has my husband's letter in front of them, but as you have seen in it, the, the increased traffic, the, the lack of characteristic. Sorry, I am drawing a blank now, but, but yes, I did just want to stress my points on how much I do enjoy this neighborhood, the uniqueness of it, and I would just like to kind of keep that and honor that as best as we can, because I do think a lot of neighborhoods are going away with that. And I think that's something nice that we have, so thank you.
Thank you, questions from the board? Anybody else who'd like to provide testimony? That's okay. We'll give you a moment.
And the mic is detachable, so.
My name is Pamela Riendo, I live at twenty-five Penachuck Street, and I'm a little concerned, I, I do have some questions. When it was brought up about the traffic, it's a very small street, Penachuck Street, it's not a wide street, can't really do two cars and then you've got kids walking. As you can see, I'm in a wheelchair, I have a power chair, and I like to take my grandchildren to the park. If we have even, the average home, if you bring six more homes into our area that come out on our street, going right or left, the average home is going to have at least two cars. Because that's just how life is right now, is the average home, husband and wife usually each have a car. And I'm not going to be safe taking my power chair and going down to the park with my grandchild and have enough room to do that. As it is now with school buses that come down the street, there's not a whole lot you can get past, or, you know, you have to like go on the side of the road. We also have the big one at the end of the street, the ice cream place, which generates traffic. So getting in and out of Penachuck Street is not always easy, or even if it's like you say, seven o'clock in the morning is when they'd probably be leaving or coming home at dinnertime. On the weekends, there's more. If some of these families have other people that come for a birthday party or whatever, there's not a lot of parking in that area, so they're going to extend out to plus, to Penachuck Street to park. That, again, takes room away. My, my chair will work on the pavement to go to the park, there aren't any sidewalks, and that's what makes our, our neighborhood unique, is it's, it's a family area. It's, it took us twenty-five years to get our first home, and it's on Penachuck Street, we love that, that street. Also, you're going to have construction there. I mean, we're gonna, you know, I'm not just making it about myself, but it's going to make a lot of noise, you're going to have construction trucks that are going to come, where are they going to park? Are they all going to be down there? Waste removal, do we pay for their waste removal? How is that going to work? Do they get their own dumpster, which, no offense, but I wouldn't want a dumpster in my neighborhood one street over. The smell of that for six people using it is not the greatest thing to do. I mean, I, I have been researching our area, I sent a letter with a lot of bullets. There's a lot of factors that you have to think of, of the families that already live there. I understand that Nashua needs to grow, I understand that. But in the small neighborhood, we've had sections of growth in, in that area, down Penachuck Street, the cul-de-sac at the end, going the other way. It's just not, for me, it isn't going to be great for me, it's not going to be good when they come out of that, that driveway, I guess you'd call it, or the drive path, or the street, if you make it a street. No matter where you turn, you have to pull out pretty far into the street. We have a lot of children on that street. And also, if there are young families that come in with more kids, is that going to overpopulate our school? We already, Penachuck Street is already a school that's full. I mean, I'm a grandmother, my grandkids come to see me. If I can't enjoy and take them out, I might as well just sit in a chair by a window and just stare out into nothing. My family means everything, my neighbors mean everything to me. And I don't see how this can possibly benefit us if that's the way in and out, if that takes up part of our street. If I can't live freely to have some kind of freedom to spend time with my grandkids. grandkids. As it is now, it's great during the day if there's no traffic there and there's no way, I can go down the street and feel safe. I can hold on to my grandchild's hand and use my power chair and go down to the park. If we have extra people there, or extra traffic, or whatever, where you can barely go, two cars down that street, as it is, if anyone's parked there, you can't get, you can't get through. So now it's not safe for me. It's not safe for a lot of the children in that neighborhood that want to ride their bikes or skateboard or do any kind of activity getting to that park. It might sound foolish, but that one air, that one road that you'll make to come in for six houses, I don't see how that can work. I don't see how trash pickup can go down there, come out again. Who pays for that? Does that come out of our taxes? Because it's, it's, if you're putting in a six condo community, shouldn't they be responsible for that? And does that not take into consideration for us? It took us a long time to, to get our first home. This is the only home we've ever had, other than living in an apartment. And to be stuck like this and not be able to enjoy it with my neighbors, or my grandkids, or my family, it doesn't help me, and it doesn't help a lot of people. You know? You've got people coming out. When you turn, I don't know if any of you have seen that entranceway to the street, it's not right, so going right or going left, if you're coming out of there and a school bus is coming down, or depending on where they pick up the child at the corner or wherever, there's not a lot of room.
I, I, I do apologize, but you are out of time. Is there one quick point you want to make? That's okay. And would you have a copy of your letter as well?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
I live on Rand Court Street, but Penachuck is right behind our road.
Would you mind stating your name and address?
Ian Bannister, 8 Rand Court Street. Behind our street is Penachuck Street, runs by that way. Little vague and foggy about this whole development, thankfully us neighbors, many of them, which has cited Rand Court, San Terre, Karen, all the neighborhoods are kind of concerned about this. My concern is, is this a housing development? Is this a little neighborhood? Or is this a condo development that they have an HOA that they have to follow?
It is proposed as a condominium development, yes, and there would be a homeowners association.
Concern to me is...
A condominium association.
Thank you. Concern to me is, like with many people, our family moved to the area of Penachuck and Rand Court to own our own home. So if you are a part of an HOA, you are part of a development, so you really don't own your home. You have a development, you have to follow the guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. People in Nashua want to have their homes, maybe people want to have lawn care and all that sort of thing, but I think most people would like, I'd like to move to Nashua to get a house, live in North Nashua, go to Penachuck and go to Nashua North when my kids grow up. I think people, in my mind, would rather have their own home than follow an HOA that follows those guidelines. So, that being said, if you have that property, I think the better thing would be to have the developer put in a neighborhood of four homes with better lot sizes, so that someone can buy a house and own it for themselves, and have a zoning that like they're not going to do McMansions as many places do. But people want to buy houses, and I think being a part of a condominium development is not maybe the best way. I don't agree with that, but I think wisely, as the folks serving in Nashua and serving your community and the citizens here that pay for the taxes and love the city, please take in account that we are concerned about the development, that you really hear us out on this, and the way you're going to set this out. But I think it'd be better if it was less homes and more variance about, we don't want to go into Nathan's Court with the sinkholes and the flooding that Britain's Landing gets when it's over raining and the waters come up by the creek, so where does the runoff come, where do the water runoff come, and all that stuff and traffic. My husband and I, I live on Rand Court. Sometimes I go down Penachuck, I can't even get out of my street sometimes, it's so busy. So, and the, the school and everything, so please consider our concerns. Thank you. I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years, and my children loved living here.
Questions from the board? Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing no one, I am, I do want to acknowledge, before we ask the applicants to come forward, that we did receive a few letters. I know some of you have also spoken. We do have a letter with comments and concerns from Peter Gould of 19 Penachuck Street. Again, it is a part of the record, so I'm not going to read it in detail. We also have a letter, as we previously acknowledged, from Pamela and Dennis Rando of 25 Penachuck Street. As was noted, we actually received two letters, an earlier one and a later one, from Randy Tramell regarding the impact to surrounding property values. And we also have a letter from Samantha Zacks, also with questions, concerns, and opposition, that's of 8 Penachuck Street. In addition, we received a letter also expressing concerns from Chris Perrin at 20 Penachuck Street. So again, I didn't read all of these into the record, some of you have spoken to them, but do know that they are a part of the record, and the board members have read all of these and absolutely will consider the, you know, your questions and concerns, and I do believe the applicants have received copies as well. So with that, I'd invite the applicants back up to the podium for a chance to rebut any of the comments that you may have heard, or question, and of course, answer any questions that may have been asked.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Eddie Pearlman, attorney in Pearlman, here in Nashua. Mr. Chairman, the road width entering the site is 24 feet wide, and I believe it's, again, I'm not 100% on this, but because it's a condominium, because it's considered a private driveway, it doesn't, it's not a roadway, it doesn't need sidewalks, and so, but to answer your question, that's a 24-foot width driveway. Mr. Shaw, to answer some of your concerns, which are, you know, fair concerns, we've, we've talked about them in the past with other, other projects, you know, please remember that these are one-floor units, you know, so we don't expect anyone's going to be on the second floor looking down at any neighbors. Homes, the bedrooms, the primary bedrooms are intentionally in the back of the units, they're kind of the quietest part of the house, and we will make every effort to adjust or tweak or move Unit 3 further away from the side yard setback. That is a good concern, that looking at that, that tonight, that is, that's tight to that side yard setback. Mr. Marazzi of 30 Brenton had some good concerns. The, first off, with respect to the slope and the water runoff, you can see that the engineers have started in on their work with respect to water runoff and water control and stormwater control, because toward the back of the property, there's a stormwater basin, and toward the very front of the property, right along the driveway entrance, there's a stormwater basin, so the intent is to, you know, keep everything on-site, infiltrate on-site, as we're required to do with it, with any project. The buffering will be within the setback area. The buffering will be supplanted by a solid fence. I don't have a detail on the solid fence, if it's, if it's a vinyl, if it's going to be stockade, but the perimeter will, will have a solid fence, including, we will, we will work around the garage from our immediate neighbor, there's Raymond at 14, Penachuck. That garage seems right on our property line, but we can, we can work around that, and the fencing will kind of work its way around that. And if she needs an easement, we're not going to ask her to move that, that garage, that shed back there, we would grant an easement to, to accommodate that. That's easy to do. I own my condominium. Condominium owners own their condominiums, and they are subject to the condominium declaration, but the condominium is an ownership, just like, just like anyone else's home throughout the city. The condominium unit owners will be subject to the declaration, and in all my years writing condominium declarations and reviewing them and reading them, I've never seen an instance where a condominium unit can be expanded. And I will represent to you that this condominium declaration will say, will call that out specifically, the units cannot be expanded. Sometimes if there's a lot of, another 100 acres next door, you can, you can add on to a condominium project, but that's not, that's not the type of case that we have here today, but these particular units will not be able to expand. They won't, they won't be able to go up or out, and people will, will have that side yard for their, for their own personal use as limited common area. What else do we have? The, you folks are aware, condominiums, private property, they will have their own trash service, not city trash service, and so that's, you know, a typical part of your condominium, condo fee every month that you pay. We believe we have a project that works with six units. We believe that six units is fair and respectful of the neighborhood. If the board is having trouble going with six, you know, we, we would consider proceeding forward with five units, but we really believe six is fair, it works. We have, again, we have next to no traffic. I know people anticipate there's going to be lots of traffic created here with this, but, but it's, it's really not. It's no different from any other, you know, home use in, in the neighborhood. I've driven up and down Penachuck, I don't live there, so I respect the neighbors, but I've driven up and down Penachuck, and we can access this site, trash trucks, fire trucks, or there was a comment about a fire. We're not, we're not doing the minimal, with respect to the truck turning radius, we're doing what's required to get a fire truck around that circle. And those are, those are standard templates that the fire, that the city regulations and the Fire Marshals require us to implement when they, when we build roads like this. But more often than not, you folks have seen that fire trucks often just stay out in Penachuck Street and run hoses in. But regardless, the circle that you see, the cul-de-sac that you see can accommodate the fire truck. So unless there are any further questions from the board, that's, that's all I had.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, that's a good point. This, this particular project has already had a level of review, because it, it came to engineering, it came to planning staff as a conservation subject, and so the layout that you see, the preliminary engineering that you see with stormwater, that's already, that's already had kind of one pass by staff, and so we believe this, this works, as, as shown, again, we, the board will consider moving forward with this thing. We would, again, have a trip to the planning board, and hopefully we can proceed. But, thank you very much.
If I may, we did have a specific question from the owner of 14 Penachuck regarding the pine trees. Do you know, are those pine trees on, on your property, and will they be removed?
Any pine trees that are on that property? Yes.
Scott Bonifant from Gateway Homes.
Thank you.
Attorney Pearlman, would you repeat his answer so that it goes into the recording, please?
Absolutely. Pine trees on our lot would likely be removed in the area behind 14 Penachuck. Would likely be removed. But again, you know, there will be landscaping, there will be fencing throughout the whole project.
Questions from the board? Mr. Neely.
One, one last question I saw in one of the letters from 19 Penachuck. They were concerned about the, the traffic, the driveway specifically set up directly in line with their front windows. Is there a way to, to move that a little bit? You know, you get a retention plan there. Is there any way to, to help out Number 19, so they don't have a direct headlights into their front windows?
Ms. Neely, I am, I, I don't know, but I will commit to you that we can take a hard look.
Thank you.
If we can shift, if we could shift the driveway over a little bit, maybe move the stormwater on the other side. Again, I'm pretending I'm an engineer right now, but we will take a good, hard look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Not, thank you?
Thank you very much.
So now there is the opportunity for just one person who spoke with questions, concerns, or opposition to the project to come forward and kind of have the last say. That's not required, it's up to you. If you all want to think about it, you know, very, very briefly, kind of convene and see if somebody wants to come forward, you know, you are welcome to do that, and we can give you a minute to see if that is possible or desired.
We can also reconvene as neighbors before we do so?
You can just briefly chat amongst yourselves, very briefly, but yes.
Mr. Chair, can we take five minutes?
Yeah, in fact, we had a request to take a five-minute recess, so we will give you five minutes to decide, and, looking at my, so we will reconvene at, well, 7:41 seems weird, but we'll reconvene at 7:41. reconvene at seven forty-one. Okay, everyone, we would like to resume the meeting. I have, you all had a chance to convene and decide whether or not you have one person, and it looks like we have a winner. If you wouldn't mind just repeating your name and address for the record.
No problem. Samantha Zacks, eight Penachuk Street. I've connected with a couple of my neighbors, both on Penachuk.
Excuse me, would you just mind keeping the conversation down, please? We can hear, the audio is such that we can really hear you well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I connected with some of my neighbors on Penachuk, Rand Court and on Brenton. And we are requesting that further testing be done. I know that there was mentioned that, you know, this is such a small development that it's not customary. But I think considering the fact that it's essentially like a dead end slash cul-de-sac neighborhood, we have no sidewalks. We're just requesting more consideration and testing to be done in order to determine, you know, what kind of impact that could have on us as far as traffic. Because again, we don't have sidewalks. We're also requesting more testing and insight done, or intel, whichever, about just as far as like bringing in some engineers and assessing the land. Because my neighbor on Brenton is concerned about runoff as they do have a sinkhole. And by the way, I do have a sinkhole on my property too. So, you know, I'm sure engineers, civil engineers will be able to give a little bit more insight into this before we start digging. And we're also requesting consideration for fewer units, perhaps even four, if that's possible. There was a very valid concern about whether or not that flag pole type layout would even be conducive to emergency units being able to deploy safely. That's valid. So again, that's another thing that we were considering as well. So those are our thoughts as a community.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Some more, just feedback for, so the applicant did note, and it does show on the plans, there has already been some engineering study on the property. And it's also a requirement that they don't allow any runoff from a project like this to, into any of the adjacent properties. So that's why there's already proposed stormwater basins. And there has been that engineering work, and that'll be part of the, again, if it goes forward, that'll be part of the detailed engineering plans that also get presented at the planning board. But that's pretty much a requirement of any project like this. So I understand that's almost like a universal concern when these kind of things are going on, we hear it all the time.
Yeah.
But, you know, thankfully, it's pretty much codified into the law
Okay.
that it has to be done. And civil engineers do this work all the time. So just if that helps allay the concerns regardless of how and where this project goes forward. But that is something that has already had some consideration and
Okay.
we'll have further study.
That's wonderful. Is there any way, I mean, so has it already been published or is it still being worked through? Is that something that the neighbors are able to gain some copies of so that we can take a look as well?
So if I, if I may, to just jump in, and I will ask Mr. Fock a question for clarification. But Mr. Fock, should the zoning board grant the relief requested this evening, would the next step be that this goes to the planning board for review?
That's correct. And anything that's submitted into our office is all public information anyway, so you can come in and look at the files that we have.
Okay.
They're all public records.
Okay.
So what Mr. Shaw was alluding to, not to speak for you, and also just in general, is the zoning board's focus is really on the five points, five-point criteria set out in the variance law. If we do grant relief, it's not the end of the process. There's still additional and further review. Generally, the planning, I'm sorry, the zoning board doesn't get involved in things like reviewing drainage. But it is something that is important. It is reviewed. And if this relief is granted, it's not because the board doesn't think that's important. It's just generally not something that's within our scope.
Okay, that's understandable.
Your comments are appreciated.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so we're now going to close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? I can jump in. Mr. Neely, go ahead.
So this was a very interesting application to read through. It was a very thorough application given to us. And as, from the time we received it, we kept receiving, obviously, feedback from the neighbors. We received some more feedback from the applicant, primarily some drawings and an update from a realtor that we were not going to, that if this went through, it would not pull down any property values. You know, it's very interesting because if I had driven by this three weeks ago, I would not have known this 1.8 acre parcel existed. It is rare to see something of this size still left in this area. I did not see the building that was knocked down, but I understand it was, it needed to be knocked down. And I think it's pretty safe to say, and I think the neighbors probably agree with this, something is going in here. Like this 1.8 acre parcel is not going to sit here with trees on it for the rest of its natural life. It's just what is the right thing to go on to this, into this area? It is interesting that if you look at Nathan Court, it looks to be, and my understanding is it was sort of a similar process, not with condo. But Nathan Court was kind of created right behind it, so we have an idea of what this could look like. I also live on a seven-house cul-de-sac. And so there's not a lot of traffic on my seven-house cul-de-sac. And not only from my general knowledge that there won't be a ton of traffic generated here, in my opinion. We also have the traffic study done by the city that basically says you're going to see six cars in the morning, six cars in the evening, and one or two as you go through the day. I did have a chance to sit when I went to go do a site visit. Many people may or may not know this, we do drive by some of the properties, kind of take a look at what the application says versus what we see. I did sit on Penachuk and for 10 minutes, not a car passed me. Granted, it was Saturday, and I understand there's a lot of school traffic during the week. I am a very big outdoor person, so I'm always cognizant and concerned about sidewalks, people being able to travel around safely around the city. You shouldn't have to worry about anybody's safety. And I don't love the fact that Penachuk does not have any sidewalks. That being said, I'm going to guess that most of the traffic coming in and out of this is not going to be proceeding down Penachuk towards the river, probably not really going towards Karen Ave. They're going to be heading back out towards Concord Street. I'll let Mr. Shaw get to it, I'm sure when he gets to that point. I didn't have a ton of concern about the six buildings on this. You know, really, that's why I asked the question to the applicant of why they went from seven, because the original paperwork we saw talked about seven. They went down to six, they really explained why. And quite frankly, when I take a look at Brenton, I mean, I could take those three properties behind it and I could superimpose them right onto this property and probably get more than six properties on there if I tried really hard. So I do think that this 1.8 acres will be able to handle this development. So for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Other thoughts?
I don't mind jumping in. I think that in looking at, you know, what's proposed, just as kind of a starting point, overall, the density, I think is consistent, you know, with the character of the area. Kind of do it similarly, looking at GIS, doing the math, I think to Mr. Shaw's point, if you kind of take away an assumed area for the cul-de-sac, these individual lots, theoretically are probably about 0.2 acres, which is pretty consistent with the lots and the density that we see in the area. So I think for that reason, it's consistent with the character. There will be more traffic. I agree, I don't think the traffic will be significant. It will be more, of course it will. Any house will bring more. But I don't think it would adversely impact the health or safety of the area. I think when it comes to why do we have this requirement, it's hard to say. That we limit it to one principal structure around a lot, but I would assume that it is primarily for public safety to ensure that you can safely access all of the individual homes on the property. That's kind of why I drilled into the questions on the design. But I think I'm satisfied that the width of the road is sufficient at 24 feet. And at least based on testimony, the cul-de-sac is sufficient to provide emergency vehicle access. I think that's satisfied. Overall, and I don't doubt that the size of the property and its shape is a special condition, and I do think what's proposed overall is reasonable. I don't take issue with the six units. I do, however, share Mr. Shaw's concern about the setback. And I would be open to if a motion were made to approve to a condition that a 25-foot setback be adhered to around the property. And the reason I say that is because I think that the residential setbacks that are applicable to the surrounding neighborhood are a part of the character of the neighborhood. And so I see that as important. And I think that the applicants are choosing a one-floor design, that's fine, that's a choice, making for a larger floor plate. They're choosing to propose six, they're choosing this road layout. You know, those could be configured differently. But again, I'm not, that may or may not be the will of the board. But if it were, then it would be their choice to whether to modify the building designs, modify their orientation. I note that there tends to be more of a setback, if you will, between the individual homes in the development than there would be from the surrounding lot lines. It's a choice. You can crowd them together more if you wish. These are all, so again, I throw that open, but overall, I think I am in support. I do trust that the planning board will review traffic, will look into the engineering and the drainage, and I do believe those are legitimate concerns. Buffering has also been mentioned, fencing has also been mentioned. Whereas it's always a balance between putting in fencing and cutting down trees, and what's the right balance, I'm not sure. So those are my thoughts, and I'm interested to hear what other members have to say.
Mr. Laino.
Yeah, this is sort of my neighborhood. My wife and I walk this neighborhood on occasion. And it is quiet neighborhood. There's not a lot of traffic down any of these streets. I also note that some years ago, I lived on a similar-shaped cul-de-sac within a condo, detached condo, raised my son there. And it was also very quiet. There was not a lot of traffic caused by the houses on the street. I share Mr. Shaw's concern about the setbacks. I mean, you compare against Nathan Court. These are individual lots that are meeting the setback, so those houses are, it's not really comparable to what's being proposed here. And I think that the setbacks are an important part of keeping the neighborhood feel rather than having things crowded right up against the lot lines of the neighbors. I did see that some of the neighbors had asked about an exit onto Brenton Drive, but I don't think that's possible, given that there are other lots there. It would, I would be happier if there were fewer units on this lot. I agree with Mr. McCarran that something's going to go in there, and that's the way things go in this city. And it's our responsibility to try to make sure that what does, what development does happen is consistent with the neighborhood and other concerns. So, you know, I would like to see fewer, I would like to see more of a setback. But something's going to go in there. And, you know, we see cases like this all the time where there's a wooded lot and people are upset about losing the trees, losing the wildlife. Unfortunately, there is no guarantee that your view or woods nearby is going to stay there. Where I live, there were quite a few woods that are no longer there because it got developed. So it's terrible, but that's, you know, that's what happens.
Other thoughts? Mr. Shaw.
I think, thank you, I think you did a very good job of kind of capturing my thoughts and concerns. I will note, I mean, I think in most regards, I don't have a problem with this project overall. I think scale-wise, I think even like, I mean, I was doing the same thing. I look at a lot of the surrounding lots and the homes, and having six in here feels pretty consistent with that. It's not some overreach in that regard. My biggest stumbling block still remains that setback. And I would support a motion that did speak to maintaining a 25-yard setback all around. And I think, I think you said it well also, as far as, I think the homes can be shifted, I think they can be put closer together. I think there's different things, they can be turned, whatever, you know, I think some different things can be done, even if the general same footprint remains. I just, I feel like when we're being asked to give relief on a proposal like this, that some of the, something like maintaining a 25-yard setback and treating all of these as like rear yards is very consistent with what's proposed, and I think is a reasonable trade-off for the relief that's being asked. So I don't think I can support it as it is, at least with the proposed, you know, placement of the buildings. Sure, five might be nicer in some regards, but I really don't think, as far as, again, I just, I look at like others have, I think density-wise, I don't see that as inconsistent. And I think other good points were also made, whether it's about traffic, about, unfortunately, you know, lots get developed, people lose adjoining nature, it's just, it's what happens. And there's not much we can do about it. I do think, like you said also, something will get developed in here. So that's kind of where I stand. I just, I can't get past the setbacks, but if we add that further restriction, I would be okay with that.
Other thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
I generally agree with everything that's been said. I think everything's been said pretty well. Again, I am taking what Mr. Shaw said and really considering that. Again, I don't have an issue with the proposal, the density. I think it's done well. I think it really comes down to the fact that, you know, the lot, the way it's laid out, it's a little bit more narrow than it's, it's deeper than it's a little bit more narrow. So I think there's a challenge there. I don't know, again, if anything can be shifted. I think there's a minimum, they're meeting the fire marshal's, you know, what he needs to approve this project for a turnaround. So I don't know how that circle could be shifted. Looking at the unit that you were concerned about, I do get that it's very close. But it's also 175-plus feet away from the home on Concord Street. So in that respect, I'm not saying it's ideal, I'm just saying that it's, we don't have a home that's really close to that, to what would be the rare of that particular unit. So I would not be uncomfortable with approving the project the way it is. But I'm going to support this project in whatever fashion it's going to come out to tonight. I just think that, again, I think as a whole, I think it's a good project. Again, better than as what said could, maybe could have been potentially laid out as more, as a townhouse. could have been potentially laid out as more, as a townhouse strip, townhouses like we've seen in some other locations in the city. I'd rather see this than a strip of townhouses here. So.
Oh, sorry. I think Mr. Laineau captured my position pretty well. I shared his concerns, so that's all I have to say.
And I just, I would like to, though, I definitely focused in on Unit 3, and that was also just to help with the dialogue with Attorney Perlman. But as I noted also, I was, I'm also concerned about Units 1 and Unit 6, and those, there are adjacent homes that are much closer, because I agree. When I look at Unit 3 versus that property on Conquest Street, yeah, it's a pretty good distance. So in some regards, it doesn't present itself as quite the same direct concern in that regard, but it's still, I don't know what that property has, if they have their property cleared all the way to the back or not, or whatever. And it's really, I still think the right thing is to not have a structure that's still right on, you know, right up against their property line, basically, that doesn't treat it as if it were like a rear yard. So that, but again, it's really the three properties that definitely are not meeting a 25-type-of-foot setback versus the, just the strict 10-foot that's, you know, required. So, but that, so I have more concerns as just Unit 3. It's actually three units of the six proposed.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Just throwing out there. And I completely agree with Mr. Shaw. I see his point, and I, again, I don't know if I choose to live in that particular unit. For this proposal, the way it's being proposed and with the setbacks that are here, right, are we, if, I'm just asking a question, if we were to propose a 25-foot, you know, setbacks, are we opening ourselves up to any type of issues going forward if we were to be challenged on that? So what I'm saying is, is that we create an extra burden that can we, can we, I know we can make a motion to do whatever, but I'm just looking at going forward in light of other things that have happened, just being conscious about whether or not we're putting ourselves in jeopardy or not. That's all.
Well, I guess I would attempt to answer it to say that, you know, I couldn't provide a guarantee that we are or are not, you know, providing potential fuel for litigation, but I would say that I think that imposing a condition that the setbacks that are already applicable to this neighborhood, applied to this development, I think would be a defensible position. That'd be my view. Were we to perhaps ask, put in a requirement that exceeded, perhaps that'd be a difference.
Mr. Chairman?
There have been several, if not numerous, condo developments and PRDs and other developments that have mandated a certain setback or buffer area around a property, like a rear yard or side yard or perimeter property. That's really actually very common. We've seen some with a 50-foot setback, 100-foot yard setback, I mean, 100-foot setback, all kinds of numbers. We also did, our staff has noted this as an issue for a while. As a matter of fact, we did propose an ordinance that did mandate a rear yard setback on exactly Units, like Unit 3, where the back of a house in this plan is shown correctly as a side yard setback, but in all reality, it acts like a rear yard setback, and that was never supported by another board. So we usually mention it, but it never gets anywhere. So, but I think if it's a reasonable setback or buffer area that the board would like to impose, I think it's defensible. If neighbors have concerns or there's concerns with buffering or trees or water runoff, a reasonable setback or buffer is reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could please have a point of order, because this whole setback discussion was not brought up in the initial deliberation.
We are in deliberations now.
I know.
I'm not sure that's a point of order. Mr. Shaw expressly raised the setback issue, you know, during the public hearing.
Well, that's true. However, there was not a discussion of increasing the setback. I just have two points I want to make, and I'm not.
I will, I will have to ask the board whether or not the board is adhering additional testimony from Attorney Perlman. Mr. Shaw?
I'll make a motion to hear additional testimony from Attorney Perlman.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Laineau. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Perlman, you have the floor to address those specific issues.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, members. Just two points. Should the board consider increasing the side yard setbacks? I would make two requests. One, that you increase it to 20 feet, not necessarily 25 feet, because it does make a difference. Every foot, I hear makes a difference, but more importantly, I would request that it not apply to that front leg of the property, because I would be okay where it's starting the side yard, the increased side yard setback where the lot expands outward, but if you increase the side yard setback or that first leg of the property, I'm not sure I can get my driveway and stormwater basin in there with the setbacks. So I would just ask that the side yard setbacks apply to where the houses are, the units are, not that, not that front driveway.
But I don't think the setbacks would apply to the driveway, would they?
Well, it depends how we word it.
We don't really have a setback for driveways to a property line. It's just the width of the driveway, and the width is fine here. So the driveway can go actually right on, right at the property line.
Okay, but I wasn't 100%. I'm just concerned, I have the stormwater detention basin in there as well, and we need that, and I don't want a condition of an expanded side yard setback to impact some of the infrastructure that we have.
The setback is the distance between the structure and the property line.
Okay. I understand, but I just, I saw that on the plan, just calling it out, because I'm not sure it's necessary to address your concern. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're now back to the deliberations of the board. Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Shaw?
And I was, I mean, I appreciate now the testimony, but quite frankly, that's what I was trying to get at. I was trying to see if I could essentially get that kind of a value, because I even feel like maybe 20 feet is a reasonable accommodation. I don't think I would go any smaller than that. I'm open to, if the board just feels like that's a better compromise than 25 feet, I'm, I can be okay with that. I just, but, you know, because I do, you know, there are, are a lot of things trying to kind of fit in there, so, but, and some of these properties are, you know, there's an angle, like on Number 6, so it's a little different already, you know, that kind of thing. So, but I'll just put it out there, at least, I'm kind of open to a little more discussion on that, if there's a sentiment towards, especially if the board is more now leaning towards this idea of adding this stipulation of essentially a rear yard setback type of implementation, I'm okay in that 20 to 25-foot range.
And I would be okay with that also, if that was the will of the board, and although I don't think it's necessary, I wouldn't mind just inserting the word "building setback" if that's helpful. I think that's implied, but.
Yep.
Other thoughts? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Let's see if I can get this right. Okay. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Gateway Homes LLC owner, 16 Penachuck Street, Sheet 49, Lot 120, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17, subsection B, to exceed maximum number of principal structures on one lot. One permitted, up to six single-family detached homes proposed. This is the RA Zone Word 2. The board has discussed public interest. There's the public interest of providing more housing in the city. The board does not believe that granting the variance would be contrary to public interest, because the development would be pretty much consistent with the existing neighborhood and would not, and well, the spirit of the ordinance, we believe, would be observed, because this is a reasonable development for this large lot in the city. The board believes that granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it is a difficult-shaped, large lot with limited access, and the proposal is a good plan for development, developing that lot. We have testimony from a licensed real estate agent that the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished, and we believe that there is no unnecessary hardship or, excuse me, the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties, being that a large, landlocked property with a narrow access to the public street, makes it, this a reasonable proposal. So with, I want to make a stipulation that the setback of buildings on this property between the built, the rear or any point of the building and the property line be no less than 20 feet. So, given all of that, I make a motion to accept, to approve the areas, the variances.
So that's a motion to approve by Mr. Laineau with one condition, to have a second. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, read.
Your variance request has passed. I should note that there is a 30-day window of appeal. If anybody does have a question on that, you know, please feel free to contact Mr. Falk in the Planning Office. You know, thank you, everyone, for your testimony this evening and for coming out. We do appreciate your input.
Thank you, Reverend.
I'm going to read the next application to the record. So the next application is the appeal of Douglas Sepala, owner, Silver Linings Development LLC. And bear with me, everybody interested in hearing this, because there's a lot to this. So, I'm sorry, I'll start again. So this is affecting the property at 16 East Glenwood Street and L. Linton Street. That's Sheet 129, lots 187 and 259, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, due to a portion of Linton Street not being not paved, it says not paved. Lot 259, for Lot 259, lot frontage 60 feet required, zero proposed. Two, lot width, 75 feet required, zero proposed. Proposed Lot 187-B. Three, lot frontage 60 feet required, zero proposed. And four, lot width, 75 feet required, zero proposed. The following variances are for existing Lot 187, being subdivided into three lots. Lot 187, this is five, minimum lot area 7,500 square feet required, 7,011 square feet proposed. Six, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 74.7 feet proposed. Seven, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 17.8 feet presumably proposed. Four, proposed Lot 187-A. Eight, minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet required, 7,047 square feet proposed. Nine, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 74.7 feet proposed. Ten, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 14.7 feet proposed. And for proposed Lot 187-B, 11, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 75 feet proposed. And 12, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 17 feet proposed. This is in the RA Zone. And Board 9, is there someone to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Perlman, attorney with Prudential Perlman here at Nashua, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Silver Linings Development and Douglas Sepala. With me tonight is project engineer Ethan Beals from Hanner Swanson, and I'll get right into it. Mr. Chairman, let me ask the board, if I may, in the packet that was submitted, that you should have received, I have a letter from Berkshire Hathaway Zirani. Did everyone get that? Do I have extra copies if you needed? All right, I'll come back though.
We got that, we got that in tonight.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we have two sets of variances for this application. One set of variances has to do with the Linton Street right-of-way, the paper street, and we're requesting four variances with respect to Linton Street. The other set of variances all have to do with Lot 187, the dimensional, what I call the dimensional variances. We have eight variances there. It seems like a lot. It's a lot to kind of take in. It took me some time to get my head around this thing, but when you see what we're trying to do, I believe you'll agree, it all makes sense. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, start you to get your bearings, start with the GIS plan that was part of the packet, just so you can see where we are, because then I'm going to reference the plan from 1924 with all these lots. So the GIS was in, was in your packet, and if you have it, you can see, you can see the neighborhood, East Glenwood, Linton, and then above us, we have Osgood. And right in the middle, on East Glenwood, we have Lot 187, Lot 129-187, we're just calling it 187. Then above that, we have, you can see where the asphalt for Linton Street ends, but the right-of-way continues, and the right-of-way continues up to Lot 259. That's one of our lots subject to tonight. Linton Street right-of-way continues all the way over to Lot 797, 9 Osgood, because I referenced that in my, in my application materials. And then north of us, above us, is my alma mater, Sunset Heights Elementary School. So just so you have some bearings, and the reason I want to start there is because now, if we look to the Rosemont Plan, this is the old 1924 plan, it looks like this, black and white and negative. If you look closely, and get your readers out, right next to the title block, right next to Rosemont, the T in Rosemont, you can see Lot 259. That's our same Lot 259 that we have before you tonight. And if you go across Linton Street from Lot 259, you see that we have lots 196 and 197, and then below that, on East Glenwood, we have lots 189, 188, and 187. Those five lots combined are our 187 today. That's why I want to start with the GIS, so you can see how the, how the, this plan, the Rosemont plan, kind of morphed into the GIS that we have today. But those lots were laid out in 1924, and had they been built out, we would have a lot more lots, but over time, this whole area can, you know, combines, merge some of those lots, and, you know, we have very few lots that are this tiny. But if you look really closely, and this is largely what's driving the dimensional variances, the lot depths for this whole neighborhood in between Linton and East Glenwood are 75 feet. And you can see that it's very, very small, very tight. If you blow this up, you can see it, just barely see it. Each of the lots, 197, 196, 189, 188, 187, 75 feet in depth. And because of that lot depth, that creates a lot of, most of the dimensional issues that we have for the dimensional variances that we're requesting. And so, so then we have, so then we fast-forward to today, and today we have property in the RA District. We have an existing home at Lot 187. Lot 187 is an unusually shaped lot that you can Lot 187 is an unusually shaped lot that you can see, and that kind of little jog in that Lot 187, where we have the 187A, that comes from the Devon Street that was laid out in 1924, but was never built. So, we kind of have that odd-shaped lot, 187. And then the, I don't know why, but Linton Street was never paved any more than it is. And so, we have an existing lot of record, 259, on a paper street, and then we're proposing three lots out of 187. That's how we have the plan before you tonight. The Linton Street, I'm going to start with the Linton Street application with respect to the right-of-way, because that is, has been addressed by this board, has been addressed by the city in the past, and it's relatively straightforward. We are proposing a private drive on the public right-of-way to access Lot 259 and to access the proposed Lot 187B. Now, the city staff, they say, because of the state statutes, RSA 67441, and how they've been interpreting, because we're on a paper street, technically, we don't have any frontage. And technically, we don't have any lot width. So, we need variances for frontage and lot width. However, this has been addressed before by this board, as I've mentioned, so we would have to proceed through this board, proceed to planning board, and take the extra step to go to the Board of Alderman to get permission to use the right-of-way for private driveway. This was done not too long ago. There was a project at 19 Robie Street. In 2020, this board granted the very variances that we are requesting tonight. And then two years later, after it worked its way through the approval process and the planning board, they then went to the Board of Alderman to get permission to use the right-of-way for the private driveway. It all got approved, and there's a Houston driveway on Robie Street today. So, we're really, we're looking for the very same relief that was done some years ago for the, to extend the driveway off of the end of Linton Street. Be a private drive, the city services would stop at the end of the asphalt today on Linton Street, and then the two homeowners would take it over from there. Trash, plowing, access, all the above. And that's really the, the heart of what the Linton Street right-of-way variance request for, so for each lot, the total of four, each lot, 259 is existing legal lot of record. Technically, it doesn't have any lot frontage, but with the private drive, we access it. And with the lot width, we access the lot. And then with proposed Lot 187B, it meets all the criteria for a private drive off of the end of Linton Street. So, that's our request for the, for the Linton Street right-of-way request for four variances. And I'll go back through the criteria very briefly. On the dimensional requirements, a couple things. Large, the dimensional requirements, first off, we have a lot area request for lots 187A and 187, the two lots on, on East Glenwood. And they're just shy of the 7,500 square feet required. If you add up the three lots together, 187, 187A, and 187B, we have 22,000 square feet. We, we are over the 7,500 required. We have a total of 22,818 square feet. So, we have the necessary square footage for the three lots. And we could draw the lot lines to make it all work, but they would be ridiculously looking gerrymandered lots that would have all kinds of zigs and zags that don't make sense. And what we're trying to do with this application is maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. We're trying to keep that rear lot line, if you follow from, say, the title block, and you follow across, we're trying to maintain that rear lot line throughout all the lots, 187, 187A, 187B, so they match the neighborhood. So, they're consistent with the neighborhood, consistent lot depth, consistent setbacks, front yard setbacks. And so, we could, we don't necessarily need the variances for lot size, but it does, it makes more sense to do it like this, is our belief. The rear yard setbacks, for all three lots, all three lots, 187, 187A, 187B, need rear yard setback relief. And that's because we're trying, again, we're trying to maintain the character of the neighborhood by keeping the front yard setbacks in compliance with the ordinance. And as a result, when you put homes, the, as a result of the lot shapes that we're proposing, the, the building area, the building envelope is very tight, it's very shallow. So, by maintaining the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, and keeping the front yard setbacks consistent with the neighborhood, it pushes the rear of the home toward the rear yard setback. And so, that creates the, the need for the, the relief for the rear yard setbacks for all three lots. And finally, the 187B on the paper street also, well, actually, let me, let me take that back, all three lots, because of the nature of the original 1924 layout with the 75-foot depth lots, today, we need 90 feet, we need our lots 90 feet deep, and they couldn't do that under any circumstance. There just isn't the, because, again, we're trying to keep that rear lot line consistent with the neighborhood. And so, as a result, none of the lots along Linton and Glenwood would comply with 90 feet, because they're all 75 feet, and we're trying to maintain that consistency with the, with the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of variances being requested, but you can see what we're trying to do. We're trying to maintain the character of the neighborhood, maintain consistent lot lines, maintain consistent front yard setbacks. And as a result, we need some relief for the, for the, for the three new, well, two new buildings, the existing building that we have, the rear yard setback. And, and that's it for those. So, that's my kind of overview of this. And, and with that, Mr. Chairman, unless the board had any questions, I was going to just, just proceed. You have my application. I was going to proceed with the, with the variance criteria.
Mr. Chair. I do have some questions.
Mr. Shaw. Yes, please. There's a lot here, so.
Yeah. So, Lot 259, if it were, if Linton Street were, had been finished down to it, as I understand it, it meets all the other dimensional requirements. I mean, it looks like a regular conforming lot, right? Just because it's on this paper street, now it doesn't meet anything. But, but if I just, if you, if you had Linton Street paved down there, and it was sitting on, on the street, it would be a perfectly conforming lot.
You have that right.
Okay. So, that's one thing. I was wondering about Lot 187A. Well, let me first make the comment, because I think it's a little bit ironic after the previous case, but, and we're talking about rear yard setbacks again. I'm going to talk about rear yard setbacks. But, I mean, first of all, it's really, in this case, the three lots in question about 187, 187A, 187B, it seems like, you know, they're all, the rear yard setback issue is really amongst those three lots to each other. So, it's, in a lot of ways, I'm not too concerned about that. But what I was kind of still wondering about is, especially for Lot 187A, and maybe, maybe it actually does apply even to 187B, because I know 187, you've got the existing dwelling, so that's, that, that issue is going to kind of stay in existence unless you further, you know, raise part of that building. And that's, that's not something I think we want to be talking about. But I'm wondering why on 187A and 187B, you couldn't go essentially wider to the left as we look at this image, which I don't have my, you know, orientation as far as north. It's probably to the west, but I, but basically, is there a reason that 187A and B couldn't basically have the building block footprint?
Yes.
Kind of go left or to the left and not, not have as much of a rear yard setback issue?
There, the answer is yes. There is a reason.
Okay.
And there's more of a reason for 187A than there is for 187B. But, and the reason is this, there's a sewer line and a sewer easement.
Okay.
Right? To the, to the west of the, where we're locating the houses. And it's immediately to the west of 187A.
Yeah.
We do have a little bit of wiggle room on 187B, but at the same time, we want it, we're trying to stagger the houses as much as we can, so they're not looking in each other's windows or backyard as much, as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you. That, that helps me understand that part of things. Okay, I think that's all I had for the moment.
Any other questions before the applicant proceeds?
Proceed.
Okay. Thank you. With respect to the Linton Street right-of-way, again, you have my application. Lot 259, existing lot of record, proposed Lot 187B, as planned for a single-family homes. And these homes, unlike the last application, we expect them to be standard two-family, two-story, let's say colonial homes. And granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, because the lots originally in 1924 were laid out to 259, and there were other lots where 187 is being proposed. And with respect to the purposes of the ordinance, you know, we believe that allowing the driveway here will accommodate these lots so that they can, you know, have single-family homes on them, and without any impact to the public health, safety, welfare, and also, you know, it reduces city costs, you know? The city, city cost ends at the end of Linton Street, and then the homeowners take it over from there. So, we believe this is non-contrary to the public interest. The variance is requested enables us to build two single-family homes, there's sufficient room for these homes on these lots, public water and sewer, residential use in a residential district. We believe that we're meeting the spirit of the ordinance by having a private driveway access for these two particular lots that technically have no frontage and no lot width. We believe substantial justice will be done, because we have an existing lot of record, a proposed lot, that will be maintained and carried forward by the homeowners, not the city. And we believe that the balancing test weighs in favor of the applicant. In this case, we provide additional housing stock, and we have really no impact to the public with respect to the private driveway accessing the two lots. With respect to property values, Mr. Scanlon of Berkshire Hathaway Varani, who lives on Hammer Street, took a look, drove around, looked at our plans, and you have his letter. He concludes in conclusion, I recognize that there are a number of variances being requested, but the cumulative effect will not adversely affect neighboring property values. These homes will be comparable to the homes in the area. Again, these, this, these homes aren't going to be giant monster homes that we see in other parts, parts of the city. These homes will be, I hate to say relatively affordable, but they, they'll be, they won't be multi-million dollar homes, and they'll be respectful of the neighborhood when we have Mr. Scanlon's letter to that effect. And given this unusual circumstance with Linton Street ends, we have an existing lot and a proposed lot, we believe we have a reasonable request and to deny, there's no fair and substantial relationship to deny the variance, given the paper street that we're trying to access. So, that's what I have with respect to the Linton Street application, Mr. Chairman. And then with the dimensional variances, I've been through them. You have my application. I'll just quickly run through. And again, we have, we technically have the square footage for these, but we think the layout makes more sense and is a better, it's better lots, really, for the, for the homeowners over time. We believe this is not contrary to the public interest, because the homes along East Glenwood and then, in between East Glenwood and Linton are older lots in a developed neighborhood with a very shallow 75-foot lot depth that doesn't comply today with the 90 feet being required. We are doing our best to maintain the character of the neighborhood by having the front yard setbacks maintained across the, along the street with the other homes on either side of us. And the relief being requested is because of the shallow lot depth and then the, the layout of the lots with respect to the lot sizes. We believe we have the spirit of the ordinance is being met, because we're not overcrowding homes, we're not encroaching on any homes, we have a cohesive use of land. The, the proposed lots are in accordance with the, with the neighboring lots nearby, so we believe that we're not affecting any public rights, welfare, safety, any harm to the public. Substantial justice being served here, taking a very challenging lot, an old lot, and there's some significant slopes in the back that our engineering team are going to have to address. And again, we believe that we have substantial justice in providing additional housing stock and the three additional homes in addition to the one that, that is there today. Again, I referenced Mr. Scanlon's letter on the property values. And then I think we would all agree, the combination of all those lots from 1924 created a very unusual and oversized lot for this neighborhood in Lot 187. We believe we have a reasonable request for residential use in a residential district, the lots 187, 187A, and 187B. And as a result, we see no fair and substantial reason to deny the request. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, that's my initial presentation. I have to answer any questions or respond to our neighbors.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Shaw.
I might direct this first to Mr. Falk, but it seems like every few years or so, we touch on some issue with paper streets in the city. And I can't recall right now, but what's, does, as far as the city's position or the idea of basically completing Linton Street to its original intended end, and also how that might fit with the property owner and the applicant's, you know, wishes, but is that, basically, how would that happen? And essentially, who funds it is part of, part of what I'm just trying to understand. And so, and maybe, like I said, maybe you can comment first, and maybe Attorney Pearlman will have some further comments.
Sure. Well, a lot of times, in cases like this, where a public street, the pavement just stops, and it usually stops at a point where there's a lot of slope going down a hill or even up a hill, that it just doesn't make sense for the city to continue it. It's challenging and to get infrastructure down it. So, a lot of times, it's just one lot or just a little bit of land that's left over. We've had several requests over the years for cases just like this. There's one at the end of Bower Street. I can't think of all off the top of my head, but we've had several since I've been here of situations just like this, where the pavement just stops at the top of a hill, and the city doesn't see any, any reason to develop it, maintain it. Sometimes there are maintenance issues. You know, in this case, the applicant will have to get permission from the Board of Public Works, actually, from Public Works to put a driveway on public property. So, they'll have to meet with DPW and make sure it meets all the Public Works standards for that. So, I'm not sure if that answered your question, but it's generally...
It's situational, case by case. It sounds very much like, yeah. And a lot of times, good reason not to, yeah.
But it's usually a case just like this, where, where the road kind of comes to a point where it just, it's a ski jump down, and the city doesn't see any need to develop any, any further. It's just difficult to maintain, difficult to...
Yeah, there's kind of a cost benefit.
Plow. Yeah, it's also plowing, it's also fire truck access, infrastructure going down. There's a lot of physical constraints that the city may say, no, we're going to stop it right here and just leave it at that. Like with Robie Street, Bower Street, there's been several.
Yeah.
But they will have to get all their approvals through DPW to do this.
Ethan Beals, our project engineer from Hanner Swanson, he may be able to weigh in on this a little bit more, because there are, Carter makes a good point. We drop off right at the end of Linton Street. If you drove out there, you know what I'm talking about. And so, we're going to have some engineering issues. But perhaps Ethan can kind of speak to the layout and the, and the design.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions, but...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager at Hanner Swanson. My name is Ethan Beals, I'm a project manager at Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street here in the city of Ashmore. Primarily, I would argue that it's an economics question or concern. It's simply road costs today are astronomical. That's realistically the world we live in. And for the city to extend and pay to construct a couple extra hundred feet of roadway to really service at most two lots is just not financially worth it for the city. Additionally, on the back end, I think Mr. Falk made good points that then you have to pay to maintain it. And so historically, DPW, Division of Public Works has communicated that their preference, again, forgetting the engineering side of it for a minute, is, it's a win-win. We, we get a private driveway that then we can build those two lots on. Yes, we maintain it, but then the city also doesn't have to pick up the cost to construct that roadway, maintain that private driveway even though it is in the city. Again, the engineering challenges are also a complete piece of it. Every road that gets constructed needs to meet certain safety and other requirements. And by doing it as a public driveway, you don't necessarily have to meet that. The last case, you turned about 24-foot roadway widths. Private driveway doesn't necessarily have to be that wide. From a fire point of view, they look at it as simply any other longer driveway that you would have. If you have a house setback from a roadway, it's simply a private drive, even though the fire department doesn't really care if it's in a public right-of-way or if it's on a private, or if it's on a property, they just look at it as another driveway.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw? I'm sorry, Mr. Leno.
Who, who owns this private driveway? Or who would own it?
Again, Andy Perlman. Through the Board of Public Works and the, and the Board of Alderman process, there would be an easement that the city would grant to the developer, who then would pass that easement on to the two homeowners. And so it would be the two homeowners, homeowner's responsibility to maintain, to plow, to sock a couple bucks away, so to repair as necessary over time. So there would be a driveway easement agreement between the two lot owners.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board, Mr. Neely?
The, lot 259, I assume the topography of that is below that of 36 Lynton? Is that a safe, safe assumption? And is it, and is it above 9 Osgood? With, with the N part of this question being, I'm sure the engineers are looking to make sure there's no runoff, no, no potential runoff to either one of those properties since there's, so, there is quite a hill there.
There's no question, as you move realistically from Andy's alma mater and being the elementary school, down towards what is Plan Left or West or Southwest even, there's significant topography, both on 259, in that Lynton Street right-of-way, and even a, a small portion of kind of 187B. All of that, no question about it, will be factored into our basically subdivision that will be coming. There'll be an engineered plan for specifically lot 259, addressing some of those slope concerns. The, the backside of 259, right on that property line, that rear property line is really the high point as it falls down towards what's effectively the south and southwest. All of those questions are, are part of, going to be part of the engineered plan that will need to come as any driveway and sewer permit application gets submitted, even for a lot of record. Well, that specific lot won't need planning board approval, if you will. The subdivision, of course, will. That specific lot being a lot of record, that will, we, we would need to submit still engineered plans to satisfy the city of engineering driveway and sewer connection permits.
So, just from my own curiosity, so there's going to be quite a slope, I believe, with that driveway? And if I, if I were buying that house, you know, I'd, I'd want to know where that water's going. So how, how do you engineer to somehow capture that water coming off the driveway?
Absolutely. The, the driveway for that lot, the, the quote-unquote "shared" private driveway that then connects to Lynton Street is, is going to be an engineering feat. It will, it will be a good amount of time spent on the engineering side for a simple driveway. Likely on the low side of it and potentially the high side, we're looking at some retaining walls, any other abilities to try to pick up that driveway. Because at the end of the day, you can't just design a driveway at 25% pitch. It needs to, and whoever lives there needs to be able to safely and effectively drive into their property. So first and foremost, getting the draw, getting the grade set, getting the correct slope of that driveway connection up. And then we look at, from an engineering point of view, we look at where is all that runoff going today? Where is the storm? When it rains today, yes, it's, it's a wooded site, but there is in bigger storm events, there is runoff leaving the site. Where is it going? And then the requirement is, effectively, we have to provide some semblance of qualitative and quantitative treatment for that runoff. I don't know if that directly answers your question without getting too, too technical into stormwater.
It does, it does, yeah. I mean, we live in New England, right? So it's going to snow, it's going to rain.
Absolutely.
However, you name it, it's going to happen, so, yeah, I got it, thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to the audience. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Please come, you know, feel free to come forward to the mic. As I noted before, just please state your name and your address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is David McHugh, this is my wife Elizabeth. We're the owners, trusty owners of, on 8 East Glenwood Street. We, we do have one concern, and I'd like to give a little background. In, in our backyard, there is a wetland area, and we're speaking of runoff. It runs down from Danny Webster and flows behind our house and then goes between our house and the adjacent house on, I believe it's 12. Yeah, it, it is in between Osgood and East Glenwood Street. Our concern is that in, when we have big storms, this, this runoff, this wetland fills up. And we, we have pictures that we can share with you people if you, if you're interested of, let's, for instance, on the September 11th, '23 storm, the water came up, right up to my back door. Thank goodness, I didn't get water in my basement. Now, this is where it gets our concern. If we start getting filled as we build down from Lynton Street, is it going to impact that wetland area? Because that normally absorbs most of the water that's flowing from up above. And if it gets compressed, is it going to back up and now, next time, maybe I won't be so lucky without getting water in my, in my cellar? That's what our big concern is at this point with this project.
And 10 East Glenwood has had water surrounding the whole, around the whole house at times.
Yeah, we, we're not sure if it's 10 or 12. We go 8, 10, 12, then 16 is the property. Are you interested, or as if, if pictures of anything or not at this point? Is this the wrong venue to bring up these concern?
Typically, the board doesn't address drainage issues. However, you know, if you do have pictures with you and you'd like to share them with the board, we'd be happy to take a look.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
It's more just kind of questions and questions and concerns.
If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and your address.
Sure. My name's Mark Connolly. I'm at 36 East Glenwood, so I'm next to the old house on the right-hand side. First and foremost, just for clarification, are they, are you keeping the old house? That's one of my questions.
Right, and you could just address your questions to the board, but they'll be hearing them.
Sorry. Are they changing the driveway, you know, in terms of the coming in and out? And the other one, the 187A, I'm guessing is to the left, so how's that going to look? And there's a brook, which is probably part of all that drainage system we were just talking about, on the left-hand side of that lot. And it just seems kind of weird that we're doing so much construction near wetlands and a brook. It's things like that. It's, it's more like, of course, like everybody else. I'm at the bottom of the hill from Lyndon's, Lynton Street. There's a heck of a retaining wall in my backyard, comes down. I don't think it would impact it, but who knows, especially if we start changing stuff around? It's the unknown, you know, that we're all worried about. And that's pretty much it, but thank you for listening.
Absolutely. Questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Elsie Captainakis, I live at 44 East Glenwood Street, which is two houses up from where they're proposing all this stuff. And again, it's just the unknown. We don't have any idea what size houses are going in, why the lots have to be made so small. We're, I don't, not nice to say, but I don't have anything to do with Lynton Street, so... But I would imagine the people on Lynton Street, even though it's downhill, they're going to know this house is there. And is the house a major part of this lot? It's hard to visualize because we didn't get any kind of paperwork that said this is what we're doing and this is where the house is going. How many stories is the house? Is it a little ranch? Is it a two-story bungalow or what is it? And we're just concerned that we don't know what's happening. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Hi, Ginger Webb in Chase Webb, 17 East Glenwood. My question also was, is the existing house staying there? To me, it looks like they're going to add a new one. And then it looks like that driveway of the new one, 187, will be shining right into my house, into my living room, that driveway. So is there a way to variance that a little bit so that that won't happen? And also to go back about the creek? That is constantly filling up. Did it once or twice this year already in the springtime?
It was September 11th, 2023 at AO5. I contacted Engine 2 to request to see if they can help out, and they said that was Public Works. Public Works did not show up until the morning.
And that, the numbers all differ. After 16, 17, it goes up to the 36, 45s. And they're side by side. 35 is right beside me. So somehow the numbers don't coincide all the way down the street. So just so you know, it doesn't sound like there's lots in between. And my thing is too, with these other two houses, well, two houses coming on, an extra house, what about the fire hydrants? I have the fire hydrant on my property, but it's not one that you can, it's so old, 1960 my house was built. You cannot make a larger fire hydrant because of the piping underneath the ground. Are they going to add another fire hydrant to cover those extra houses? That was just our questions.
And I do have to say, this road is busy.
Constantly.
There's a lot of buses, the school district is next to us, there's a scrap metal place near...
At the end of the road that constantly those trucks go flying up and down the road all the time.
And there is first responders that are going down, and I am one of them today. It is hard to get down that road when trying to get to a medical call. Because there's buses, there's people, and I understand they're going to cut down the trees possibility, I don't know. But that is going to be tough to do with the traffic. And I do have the, of that night where the whole street is flooded. I do have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Thank you.
My name's Rocky Morrow. I live at 36 Lynton Street. And one of my concerns is if they're going to put driveways at the end of the street, like when it snows a lot, the plows come down the street and they have no place to put it, they just dump it at the end of the street. And when we get a good storm, I mean, the snowbanks are like eight feet high. So how do the people living in those houses, what do they do with that snow? How do they, what do they do? Just push it back on the street or like? It's definitely an issue when it comes to snow time because when we get good storms, I swear the snowbanks sometimes are eight feet high. My neighbors across the street can confirm that. But it's just kind of a weird situation where you're going to have two houses, driveway coming up and just dumping on the street. So how does that all work come winter time? Okay.
My name is Isaac Feldpoch, and we live at 37 Lynton Street, so we would have bought one of the new properties. And more, I guess just a question, we, we really enjoy that woods, you know, just for the, the privacy and my kids run around in the woods and play and whatnot. But based on the plans, it appears that almost every tree in there is going to get wiped out. Just wondering if there's been any consideration for any kind of privacy between the new, between like our house and the new lot? I mean, you have a similar concern, you know, on your side, you have a little bit more property there. Also, because of the way that the land slopes, it's relatively easy for us to see into our neighbor Mark's house because we're up a little bit. It's going to be the same thing with this new house. You know, we're, we're, at least at this point, 10, 15 feet up above it is, we're going to be able to just look straight into the, the windows in the house there. I guess it doesn't really bother me, but it, it may bother them. Just wondering if there was any consideration for privacy or, or leaving a band of trees or something like that to, to block that a little bit. In the plan, there didn't seem to be very much space there at all, especially between our western fence, I guess, and the, and the garage that was...
Questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the podium. And I'm sorry, I would ask just once again to state your name and address for the record.
Elsie Captainakis, 44 East Glenwood Street. When they're talking about on the plan, I couldn't find where you saw a plan. And I tried to call City Hall and they transferred you to some other department, and that department wasn't helpful either. So that's why I'm so confused because all I have is this. Where do you see the plan and what they propose to do?
It should be online in the city's web, in the city's...
I tried, even looking at my own house, and I couldn't find it. Anything to show the plot lines or anything.
Yeah, the agenda package should be on the, the city's website.
It's all on the city's website. I can give you a copy of mine, just so you have it.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Chase Webb, 17 East Glenwood Street. I do agree with the neighbors, with the kids. It's good to have some trees back there. They have a fun time out there during the summer day. I remember my childhood, getting off school, going to backyard, playing some football, do whatever, and I think they should have some privacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to provide comments on the board? If not, I'm going to invite the applicant back up to provide an opportunity to rebut or respond to any of the questions. Sure.
Mr. Chair, again, Ethan Beals, project manager at Hayner Swanson. Just to kind of go through a couple of the questions if I can.
Please.
We talked a little bit, Mr. Neely had asked a little bit about the, the slope on lot 259, and let me backtrack a minute and describe. The entire neighborhood with the elementary school sitting up high, the entire neighborhood is sloping relatively significantly to what is the southwest. There's no question about that. With, with any slope comes runoff, and that's the reality of how gravity works. Water is going to flow downhill. At the low point off the west of the property, there is an existing wetland. It sounds like from testimony tonight that that wetland fills up, and that is what wetlands do. Wetlands fill up when you have big storm events. The, specifically on runoff, as, as the board knows, stormwater management, stormwater study, that is a big component of any planning board submittal that we will do. There will be a full stormwater management report and analysis that will come with what, if, if we're, if we're approved tonight, that will come with a proposed subdivision submittal to the planning board. And the goal of that will be to what we call a tenu- And the goal of that will be to what we call a tenuity stormwater runoff. So we have to prove out empirically that stormwater runoff leaving our site after the development is less than or equal to that in the pre-development condition. So at the end of the day, we will be asked to prove that the runoff leaving the site is not detrimentally or adversely affecting that wetland. I can't promise that it's going to solve the wetland filling up, because again, that is what wetlands do. But I can, my testimony tonight is that we will be asked to prove that we will not adversely impact the stormwater runoff to that wetland. As one of the questions was regarding the wetland, if there was wetland impacts, there is not. The certified wetland scientist has gone out, flagged the outer boundary of that wetland. It is shown on the property, shown on the plan, excuse me. And there is, at this time, there is no proposed wetland impacts, nor do we want to impact wetlands. The reality is, almost all, except for a tiny portion of the wetlands, do not exist on our lot anyways. And so to fill them would mean that we would be doing work on in a butter's lot, which we are clearly not trying to do. Specifically on Lot one eighty-seven, which holds the existing house, yes, I believe the intent is for that existing house to stay, albeit be renovated, put back on the market and sold, is the intent. If you were to drive out there today, it is not in great shape. It is very clearly was purchased with the intent of a subdivision and a renovation of that existing house. As part of that, we are proposing not just a renovation of the house, but the lot itself. There's several, I don't know that I wanna call them accessory structures, but garden beds, little tiny pieces that are on that lot. A lot of that will get cleaned up. A new driveway will be constructed. Just going through my notes. Regarding the size of the lot, as Attorney Pearlman had mentioned earlier, we're, despite asking for an area variance, we're really meeting the intent, in my opinion, of the overall lot zoning, which is a seventy-five-hundred square foot lot, albeit we're trying to adjust that to advance what I would call good planning principles, which is as geometrically symmetrical as we can, continuing to meet the character of that neighborhood. On fire hydrants and water pipe sizing, as part of any submittal to the planning board, we will coordinate with the Fire Marshal's Office. We will be asked to do a hydrant flow test to prove that there is sufficient pressure and flows in that network of water piping to support any firefighting activities. There is an eight-inch line in Linton Street. Eight inches is a pretty typical size around the city. And depending on what those flows come back on, I would anticipate a coordination with both the Fire Marshal's Office and with Penetra Water Works to ensure that we can achieve adequate domestic pressure in the proposed housing, but also making sure that we're not adversely impacting that pressure network, so that if there is ever a fire, that the Fire Department has adequate fire flow in all of the fire hydrants in that network. Regarding snow removal, absolutely is a concern of ours. Any dead-end street, the city, for the most part, is pushing and banking snow at the end of that dead-end street. That will likely be addressed, or that will have to be addressed, excuse me, as part of any agreement to work inside that right-of-way. The agreement for us to build the private driveway that we're gonna have to work out with not only DPW, but that will need approval from the Board of Aldermen, will have to have some piece spelled out in it regarding snow removal, what the future owners of these lots will have to do regarding snow removal. If the city leaves a snowbank, the maintenance will be ongoing for the private driveway, and they will be on the hook, for lack of a better term, to continue that maintenance to ensure that their driveways can be accessed, both by themselves and anyone else who may be entering. Regarding privacy, absolutely, there is, any time you have smaller lots, there is a concern where if you have a forty-foot tall pine tree, and it is twenty feet off a house, well, if that pine tree falls, it's going to fall on a house. And so really, first and foremost, we wanna make sure the lots are safe for any proposed housing. If we build a new house, we don't want, as any homeowner would say, or as any homeowner would do, if there's a tree that would be negatively impacting potentially your house, you would wanna take it down. That being said, as part of our planning board submittal, we're absolutely going to be entertaining and looking at potential privacy matters, whether that looks like a stockade fence, solid vinyl, or additional plantings along some of those shared property lines. That will likely come in the form of a landscaping plan and or detail at our planning board submittal. I think I hit on a lot of them. I'll turn it over to Attorney Pearlman to kind of back clean up for me. Oh, sorry.
Before you go, Mr. Shaw.
There had been some questions about the driveways at one eighty-seven and one eighty-seven A. So I think the first question was, is the driveway at one eighty-seven staying in the same place? And I know you just noted that it was gonna get, I think, rebuilt, but I can't quite figure out, looking at the plans myself, if it's staying in the same spot or not. It seems like it probably generally is.
I would say, the goal of the new driveway is to provide not only adequate depth for cars and likely a car or two, but any other pieces that can come with homeownership. Honestly, the lot is not in great shape. And where driveways are is not necessarily where cars get parked. The goal of this lot and part of the lot reno will be to, renovation, excuse me, will be to construct a new driveway, will be to spruce up the front door of that lot. The new driveway will go to what is planned right or the east side of the existing house. On Lot one eighty-seven A, because you were kind of leading to that, the driveway will lead directly up to the house. Whereas on one eighty-seven, the driveway will basically come up adjacent to the house, if that makes sense.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
May I just ask a question on the snow removal? I get the point that that's something that would have to be worked out, but do you have a sense of what that resolution would be? Because clearly, a wall of snow in front of the driveways, even if it's the two homeowners responsible for addressing it, really is not an adequate solution.
Absolutely. I think it comes in the form of just an ongoing discussion. I know that's not a great answer to your question. We're running into the same issue, not issue, the same discussion on a separate project recently in the city, where we have to have a discussion on another dead-end street with DPW on, okay, how do we come up with a solution that works for both? And so, yes, is the easiest thing to just simply plow Linton right down to the end, where we're gonna provide the driveway? That is the easiest thing, no question. Will it have to be pushed more towards the sides, especially at what is effectively, I'll call it our driveway connection? But the extents where the existing extents of the paved Linton Street is today, will we have to look at trying to push it a little bit more to the sides? And then that's where a contractor, or that's where the homeowners would take over? Yes, that's likely the solution, and that's likely the discussion that we would have to work through with DPW.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Andy Pearlman, I don't have a lot to add. I think Ethan covered the questions from our neighbors. Mr. Chairman, you know, having dealt with plans over the years, any plan going to the planning board in New Hampshire has to have a snow storage area. So I would imagine the snow storage area is gonna be past our shared driveway. But, you know, again, that's to be worked out with the city staff, DPW, and the Board of Aldermen. So that's all I had. I didn't, Ethan really covered the ground for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's our presentation.
Questions for the board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as you may have seen last time, we do have the opportunity for one person, if you wish, who did have questions, concerns, or spoke in opposition, to come and provide final comments to the board. You don't have to, but you do have that option. And if you'd like to just take a moment or two to speak amongst yourselves and see if there's somebody who might wanna give some final thoughts to the board, you're free to do that, and we'll give you a moment. Okay, I think we're back, and I think we have chosen our victim, so.
My name is Mark, sorry, Mark Connolly. I'm at thirty-six East Glenwood. Basically, just to reiterate some of the big concerns, the number one, of course, is the snow issue, because up there, when you take a look, there's not much space. So the thought of pushing it to one side or the other, it's gonna end up in somebody's property, and then snow melts, and it all melts downward. And I know the gentleman said that, oh, water goes downhill, but sometimes it goes into people's basements and stuff, you know? I have a big concern that I didn't really address this. They're asking for big setbacks, not just little tiny setbacks. They're asking for, you know, fourteen feet, nine feet, you know? There's huge setbacks. One of the setbacks is gonna impact me, because there's gonna be a driveway to the right of that house, and that's right on my property line. You know, that's one concern. The other concern is the trees. You know, wiping out, like, just slashing, burning, killing all the trees, and then redoing it, it's just gonna be this open space, and, you know, no privacy, and, you know, less oxygen and all that, so. And then that is a huge issue, the flooding at that street. I don't understand how it can't be wetlands when there's a brook that flows right along the side of that property, and it runs right through the neighborhood. I think it probably comes from the school and goes across Glenwood into East Hobot, and I don't even know where it goes. I think it ends up in the Nashua River. I mean, it's substantial. Sometimes it's dry, and other times it's almost a next side, I'm sorry, the next side's up from a brook, whatever that is. And then, of course, the road, and everything floods, and it's flooded. I've only been there four years, but I bet you that's flooded at least three, four, or five times in the four years I've been there. I think I hit anything today? Any other questions?
Excellent. Question from the board? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, with that, so we're gonna close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. Thoughts from the board? Mr. Neely?
I think, so this is definitely an interesting neighborhood. I had never been to the end of Linton Street, so I had no idea that it's just kind of dead ends. Obviously, I had no idea that it's a paper street. There's definitely a significant drop-off there. I think it was key that Attorney Pearlman started out with that map of nineteen twenty-four and showed the lots, how they're not very deep. So when I look at the plot plan here of one eighty-seven A, the proposed one eighty-seven A, proposed one eighty-seven B, and the one eighty-seven, now you could draw a line right across the middle that differentiates one eighty-seven B from A and non-A. And that's the same lot depths as everything else on Linton Street on that side. You know, this is a twenty-two thousand square foot property. That's an oversized property. As we've said many times over the last couple of years, you know, somebody has a right to develop larger lots. I mean, larger lots, you just can't assume they're gonna stay large forever and not developed. I think it is, it is a hardship that Lot two fifty-nine cannot be reached right now. And I understand why. But this project is going to open up the ability to get to two fifty-nine. I think that the owner of this property has the right to get to Lot two fifty-nine one way or another, whether it's a public street or a private driveway. You know, I do think, when I look at the proposed lot sizes for one eighty-seven A, B, and the non-letter one there, what they're asking for is, you know, to not have the seventy-five hundred, but they're all over seven thousand feet. Historically, I don't think we've had a whole lot of, in the last couple of years, had a whole lot of heartache over just a couple hundred square foot difference on a lot this size. I think the applicant's done a good job to try to maximize the amount of space available to each one of these groups. You know, I would probably have more heartache on the rear yard setbacks if the houses were already there. The fact that we're making the current one eighty-seven into three lots, you know, whoever's coming into this neighborhood is going to be coming into the situation. It's not likely to be surprised one day walking out the back door, there's a house, you know, that's been built closer to them. So I don't wanna say buyer beware, but there won't be any secrets there. So I actually think this is a pretty good plan. I understand what the folks on Linton are talking about, about snow removal. I'm sure the city and the DPW is gonna ensure that they're not getting dumped in their front yards, or things are gonna change dramatically. I think everybody's concerned about the driveway, but I do believe Hainer Swanson's gonna work with the city to make sure the driveway is set up properly. You know, we've heard a lot of concerns about the flooding brook down there. Once again, this goes to the planning board. The engineer has to sign off on this plan, that there's no more water going into this, you know, this is gonna negatively affect anybody's property here. So I hear loud and clear that these folks have a lot of concerns about the water, and I am confident that the Hainer Swanson group is going to have to ensure that there's no additional water going in it. They literally have to sign off on it with their engineer license. So for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Other thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I pretty much, I think, echo Mr. Neely's comments. And I think a lot, I mean, these cases always bring a lot of concerns from the neighbors. I mean, it's everything from the enjoyment of a previously mostly undeveloped property to now there's gonna be development there, losing, you know, it's the same thing we talked about in the other case tonight, where it's frustrating, it can be very frustrating, it can be very disappointing to lose what can be very nice natural space around you. But this is somebody else's lot, or soon to be lots potentially. And I think, you know, a lot of the issues as far as concerns about the runoff and snow removal and all those kind of things, a lot of this is really like the planning board type of issues with the site plan ultimately. I think as far as when it really comes down to what we're being asked to consider is mostly, you know, yeah, it's a lot of, I think, twelve total dimensional variances, but, I mean, several of them are directly related to the whole paper street issue. And that was part of the reason for me asking about, like, Lot two fifty-nine. The lot itself meets all the criteria. Nothing special has to happen with that. It just, it fails them all, basically, because it's sitting on a paper street. So, and, you know, again, as far as the dividing up of Lot one eighty-seven into three lots, the square footage is there to satisfy three lots at seventy-five hundred square feet. It just, we've run into this several other times through the years, where it's like, yeah, we could, we could ask an applicant to, again, do some really strangely shaped lots just to satisfy square footage, but it would, that's where I feel like these are the kind of things that work against spirit and intent in the ordinance, where I think most people would say, yeah, having just the kind of same common parallel or contiguous lot line that runs, you know, all the way basically kind of bisecting Linton and East Glenwood, that makes sense. So that's basically all they're proposing here. And it kind of worked out pretty close anyhow. It's just like, if things had just been slightly different, we might not even have those couple variances in front of us for those two lots. So I think it's a very interesting, yeah, I think, very interesting history, and it goes back to literally now a hundred years to when this was first being, you know, planned and put together. And here we are, still seeing some of the final implementation potential. But, yeah, I think the neighbors have valid concerns, but I think they're mostly planning board concerns. And, you know, encourage you folks to, assuming this board follows through and approves, and then planning board would be the next spot to go and make those concerns known. So, but generally, I think as far as. So, but generally, I, I think as far as what we're being asked to consider, I think there's very good reasons why all this relief is needed, and it will be, these lots are going to end up being very consistent with the neighborhood. They're not, they're not extremely small compared to everything else. There's many lots that are very similar size, so I think it's, and, and there's just a natural constraint of the way the depth was originally laid out on, on at least the 187 lot. So, for those reasons, I'm, I am in support.
Other thoughts? Mr. Boucher.
I'm going to support the application. I can't say anything more than what's been said already.
The other thoughts?
I think the only thing I would add is, I, you know, I concur with everything that's been said. I think the, the density and the dimensional, you know, what's proposed for dimensions is consistent. I think with what's there in the neighborhood, the only other thing I would add is the existing house doesn't currently meet setback requirements, front or rear, and most of the other homes in the neighborhood don't meet one or the other, because realistically, just given the depth, it's, it's challenging to do so.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Shaw.
I'm going to read that nice long list.
I was just going to say, it's a lot to read.
Okay.
That's advertised.
Yes.
You couldn't do that. Couldn't do that.
I'd be all for that, but I don't know. We, we, I'll just read it, just because that's what we do. So, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Douglas C. Sepala. The applicant is Silver Linings Development, LLC. The properties in question are 16 East Glenwood Street and L. Linton Street, Sheet 129, Lots 187 and 259. There are multiple requests. They are from the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, due to a portion of Linton Street not being paved, and that is for Lot 259. Firstly, a lot frontage, 60 feet required, zero feet proposed. Secondly, lot width, 75 feet required, zero feet proposed. And proposed Lot 187B, Item 3, lot frontage, 60 feet required, zero feet proposed. Item 4, lot width, 75 feet required, zero feet proposed. And the following variances are for the existing Lot 187 being subdivided into three lots. For Lot 187 specifically, Item 5, minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet required, 7,011 square feet is proposed. Item 6, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 74.7 feet proposed. Item 7, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 17.8 feet is proposed. For proposed Lot 187-A, Number 8, minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet required, 7,047 square feet proposed. Item 9, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 74.7 feet proposed. Item 10, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 14.7 feet proposed. And for proposed Lot 187B, Item 11, minimum lot depth, 90 feet required, 75 feet proposed. And Item 12, minimum rear yard setback, 25 feet required, 17 foot is proposed. This is in the RA zone, Ward 7. So, regarding this, this property, the granting the variance would be, would not be contrary to the public interest, because it does allow for the development and usage actually, in many ways, consistent with the original plans from 100 years ago. But, as we learned tonight, there are multiple lots that were essentially, had been bundled together, some, some odd shapes to them due to an original proposed street that was kind of running somewhat diagonally, that never did occur. And then, there's also a condition where the Linton Street is, there's a portion of it which is a paper street and did not extend down to the original targeted completion. So, there's many, many things about this that allow the ultimate usage of the property somewhat consistent with some of the original intent. So, therefore, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, because it does provide for these parcels to essentially exist similar to some of their, as originally proposed. The granting the variance would do substantial justice for similar reasons, in that it allows the property owner to have access to Linton Street by things like the private driveway, and does also adhere essentially to the intended requirement of lot areas, albeit some, some minimal variation that needs to occur due to the way the lots associated with the division of Lot 187 occur, like, trying to keep that consistent with the layout and the existing contiguous division of lots that runs between Linton Street and East Glenwood is what's proposed to be followed, rather than having to do some sort of alterations or, or cutouts just to satisfy a fairly minor difference of, of lot area. The unnecessary, there is unnecessary hardship here that needs to be resolved in that there's a very unique aspect to this property, some of which I've already mentioned. There's kind of like some bundling of original lots, the, the paper street that exists at the end of Linton Street, the depths of the lots as originally proposed to be basically 75 feet, whereas the current ordinance requires 90 feet for this zone. And basically, I think there is a fair and substantial justice with the general purpose of the ordinance and provisions, because these lots, in most regards, will meet the general requirements, but because of things like definitions with paper street, many of the items that, that are read into the record are, are simply because of that paper street frontage. There's fairly, again, limited deltas for the lot areas, and we also spoke to and discussed with the applicant that the, the rear yard setbacks, they're somewhat actually consistent with the neighborhood, and also it gets into the issues with the, the lot depth, generally speaking. And also, the three lots that are going to be most affected by the reduced rear yard setbacks are the three newly created lots from Lot 187. So, it's kind of like a self kind of issue amongst the lots, and these, these set, these rear yard setbacks will not be affecting other existing properties, they really will be just regarding essentially the Lot 187 division. So, basically, I think the proposed use is reasonable, the, the lots are consistent with the, the neighborhood, and I think they're, you know, they're, the solutions to do something like the private drive off the end of Linton Street is consistent with similar situations in the city, and I think for all those reasons, I move to approve this variance, these variances, excuse me.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Boucher. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? And your variance request has been granted unanimously. As I think I noted in the last case, there is a 30-day window of appeal, and if anybody does have any questions regarding that or any other aspect of this proposal, please feel free to reach out to Mr. Falk. Thank you.
All right. So, that takes us to review of the upcoming agenda. Does anybody see anything of regional impact?
Did not.
I did not.
I did not either.
I did not.
All right, so, other than that this will be a long one.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes seven cases can go as fast as two.
That's true. That's true. That's true. All right, now, any other issues in front of the board?
We have minutes.
Oh, my gosh! The minutes. Sorry about that. I'm sipping right ahead of myself.
I didn't have any minutes.
You didn't have any minutes. I didn't see anything either, actually. There were fairly brief minutes.
Yeah, that helps. I didn't either.
If you wouldn't mind just keeping it down, we are, we are still in our meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 8.
Motion to approve by Mr. Shaw, seconded. Seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? And now, I'll ask if there's any other business.
I don't think so.
Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
By Mr. Shaw.
All right. 9:30. All in favor, I'm assuming.
It's been a longer one, too.
Yeah, it's been a while.